Such a.
Four tenths of an inch.
Is that what it was? I asked what our records are showing. Four tenths is all?
I'll take it more than it's double. We got all of eight.
Oh, wow.
Dolores, can you hear me? Okay, I can't hear you guys, but.
Let's maybe mute that. Can you hear us now, Brandon?
You're pretty echoey.
Okay, we're gonna. That one should have been on.
Um, you may need to mute yourself, Dolores, then unmute the board of trustees.
Well. You were at home too, right? Hello?
Yeah, here.
Okay.
We need to mute that video for that microphone. That's all.
For the Laura meeting, Holly, I wasn't in my. I couldn't hardly hear Greg and I couldn't hear Connie.
It was hard to hear them, yeah.
We were trying to move it around. I've ordered another one of those speakers. So I can. Microphones, I can keep it back and catch both sides of the room, but.
Trial and error.
Can you hear Holly when she speaks, Brandon? Is she clear?
Hello?
Yeah, I hear Mary Rogan quite well, so.
I have a microphone right there for the board. Okay.
Okay, sounds good. It's not echoing now, so we're good.
I didn't, I didn't even try it.
No, I've got a microphone in front of your main plate.
That might, the small microphone in the front is for the Zoom people. The other is for this room.
Okay. Hi, Tracy.
So let us know when you're ready.
I'm, I'm ready. Let's get started.
Okay. Well, tonight's workshop. Is going to be, I don't know how to turn this on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is, um, we're going to see how far we can get tonight, and then if we need to schedule another follow-up session, we can certainly do that. But, uh, the mayor had asked that we start to look at what are your plans that you would like to get accomplished in your term, or at least get some footway underway for the next board. Um, you're, you're about to find out that the first year takes about, takes that first year to figure things out, and then the second year you start kind of making some traction, but there has been a lot of things accomplished, and so I'm hoping you guys can just really take off. So before we start on what we sent home for your homework, um, I thought it would be kind of fun for you guys to hear what the board that was seated in 2012 set as their 10-year goals for the town and, and let you know how far we got on those things. So in July of 2012, the board that was seated, now albeit this was before the flood, so we had that four- or five-year diversion and a pandemic in there. So they actually did pretty good. The first thing was to build in 2012, to build a new waste fire treatment plant. That was their highest priority, and that did get accomplished. The next was to put together a storm drainage plan. We also got that accomplished. Um, the water treatment plant getting removed, Apple Valley Road, we were looking at that 10 years ago. And we're finally just getting that one done. Um, to annex and build out the commercial Eastern Corridor. That was 10 years ago. Um, a marketing and branding campaign, which we did do right after that, but we're due for that again now. Um, expand arts and music, which I think LHC's done an amazing job, to build a library. So that got accomplished. To build a swimming pool and rec center. That did not get accomplished. Um, enhance the trail and links to Highway 3666. 10 years ago, they wanted that St. Brain Trail out there. A splash pad, we didn't get that. A botanic garden. Get that. Um, bone park phase one, not only did that, but also phase two. Um, a skate park. And then environmentally, they wanted, um, to work on sustainability, bring in that beery, enhance recycling and composting, and overall reduce our carbon footprint. Um, and under the housing category, they had, uh, developed affordable housing options and adopt accessory dwellings. And strengthening boards and commissions was the last one. So, um, I thought that was kind of fun to see that that vision actually may have taken longer because of two major local issues that were happening, but nonetheless, little bites, and it did get accomplished. So the things that were left on here that, um, did not happen, expanding history programs, but I have no doubt that will happen now that, you know, we have a, um, a group together. Um, there was, this did not give votes, but it was one, um, converting the Ramey property. Oh, the Ramey property. I know what they're talking about now. It was the Haynes property. That's why I was confused. It said Ramey property for campground at Meadow Park.
Yeah, that's what it was.
So that would have been, um, her, and then, um, I read a sustainability coordinator, which we did. So anyway, I just saw it's kind of fun to see, but they were looking at 10 years ago. Um, and what things remain. I, I have this list from every two years about, um, of what people hope to accomplish. And so I just thought it'd be fun to see, let you guys see that things do actually happen, though some people think, why doesn't anything ever happen?
Yeah.
But it is, and, um, there's a few things that are still out there. Uh, one of them, of course, every two years, rec center, community center. Um, one of them was to create a local jitney around town to move people place to place. That was 2016, I think. Renewable power, build a solar array, more ball fields, another tennis court. So just kind of fun stuff, but I thought it would be kind of neat for you guys to see that before we jumped into what you guys would like to try to prioritize over the next two years. And.
Question? So, uh, rec center, sounds like a great idea, but with a town of 2,500 people, is that really a reality?
Well, that's, that's probably step number one you might want to do.
Why it hasn't happened in the last 10 years?
Yeah, but I, it might be worth looking at going to DOLA and saying, we'd like to do a feasibility study on a rec center and swimming pool. And get that part of it done at least, to see if it is even reasonable.
That would be very popular with local residents. It would be very well received.
So that might be one of those, one of the bites to, instead of just right, we want to get this done in two years, which isn't likely. It's probably better to start with some smaller vision on that one. So, um, tonight, and, and tonight we want to talk about if we see a common pattern between you of what you would like to get accomplished, um, during your term. And then make sure that whatever you decide meets one of the five goals of the new comp plan framework, which they're very broad, so I think we can fit them in somewhere. And then, um, the next step would be that I will take this back to my department heads, and we will work on, um, defining metrics. People responsible, working commissions responsible, and hopefully some action steps within those goals. Okay, so that's a comeback with, to you at some point. But for now, um, Dolores, I don't know if you can bring up, I emailed you, um, the worksheet that they're working on tonight. Yeah, so what I'd like to do if we can is, um, whether it be the mayor or someone else who wants to start, and then, um, or each of you give one goal, and then we'll start going around and saying, I had that one too. We'll see if we start seeing trends. Okay? How's that sound? Would, do you have an order you want to go in there, or does it matter?
Um, why don't we just start with trustee Williams and go around this way, and then the next question, we'll go around the other way.
Oh, will you be, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Uh, which work, which worksheet are we talking about?
The one that is just what I hope to accomplish over the next two years. If you have one item that you would like to accomplish, what would it be? And if.
Yeah, number one, increase ongoing town revenue, do not be so grant dependent.
Okay, can you, if you could put that in, Dolores? And then, um, we'll see if, did anyone else have that as, oh, two people did, okay. We'll start working that.
Increase.
Increase revenue to be less grid.
Increase ongoing town revenue to not be so grant dependent.
So we have two of you that have that. Okay, Ted, do you have?
I put address parking.
Anyone else have that?
Are you asking if anyone else has it as their number one or on their list? Okay.
So we have three of those. So it's increased parking options or just address the parking issue?
Nope, uh, I think, so address parking, the issue and options around.
Okay, do you want it by who's got it on there? No. That doesn't matter yet.
Nope. One of mine kind of.
It says, do you want to look for for that one? Trustee.
Um, I have multiples, but I'm going to say the number one is fire hazard mitigation and education.
Okay, anyone else have that? Oh, one, two, three, four, five, six. Yes. So that'll go to the top.
My success was all.
It'll just keep moving around as we go through these things. It's just, if you know how many right now, it is tough. There, Rogan.
Um, so that was my number one, um, and I'll add economic sustainability. Sort of goes along with, um, trustee Williams's.
Yeah, we can always kind of redraft these as we go to.
We can kind of roll them up into buckets if we need to.
So then I, I have, mine was kind of the same as that.
Okay, anybody else have economic sustainability?
Yeah.
Okay, three on that one.
Who else do you got?
Uh, so I, I have the Eastern Corridor, um, annexation, build out, urban renewal authority, just something to keep, get moving on the Eastern Corridor.
She said build out?
Yeah, build out. Uh, renewal, uh, urban renewal authority, anything that we can do to.
Continue moving that.
Yeah, efficient annexation plan, whatever.
Anybody else have that one? Ooh, one, two, three, four, five on that. Okay. Trustee.
Um, I'm wondering if economic sustainability equals economic development. I, I did this a little differently before I was off the grid for five days. I actually started with the comp plan. So mine have more to do with the, um, goals and the complan. And goal ED3 has to do with, um, attracting and retaining businesses and services, and so I guess that would be under economic sustainability.
So what we'll do is, once we get through and we all agree to five, then we'll, which, where do they fit in? Okay. Trustee.
So I have connecting trails to downtown.
Yeah. Um, okay.
I had that too, from Principal.
Oh, what?
I had that too, but I put it in a larger, just transportation, included RTD, regional trails, and emergency ingress regress to all the neighborhoods.
About you, trustee Williams, is your broader or more specific?
Mine was more specific.
To?
To, I'm pretty much exactly.
Trails to downtown?
Well, no, actually, no, trail system to Boulder.
Oh, okay, so downtown and regional.
And actually, there's something that's not on there that I feel really strongly about, and it has to do with goal TR2, which has to do with maintaining and improving existing transportation infrastructure, including opportunities for walking and bicycling, and talking about sidewalks.
Okay.
So somewhere like.
No, keep going. Okay, is there something that wasn't mentioned on yours?
Additional affordable housing.
Additional affordable housing. Anybody else have that one?
Yeah.
One, two, three, four. Okay. Trustee.
So I want on, uh, safety, so like speed living's in town, trying to address side, some sidewalks, just kind of in general, safety.
Improve safety.
Lockability.
Lockability, that's.
Yeah.
Safety and lockability. Really have that one?
I have that under, um, wrapped up under Vision Zero, which is a Boulder County initiative.
Well, yeah, we can pay that one, two, three for that one. Okay, trustee Farrell, I have one you don't have yet.
Yes, comprehensive plan. Not only adopting it, um, but I would really like to see that we start our commissions moving into the direction of understanding our framework and that they can already start thinking about how their goals and wishes and policies fit into that, because they'll dive down further into policies. And so I feel like, so, uh, but I want to get the commissions to go ahead and already start looking at our comprehensive plan framework, even though it's a draft, and start using it to guide them.
Okay, anybody else with that one?
No, but I like it. Well, and to be honest, the two commission meetings I've already attended have already talked about the complaint and talked about their priorities within whatever meets their mandate. And so it's really good to get that feedback as to what they feel are also their priorities.
Okay, Mary Rogan, do you have anything that is not listed yet?
Um, sort of, and that is general infrastructure assessment and improvement, and this may be something that may already exist, and I don't know about it, but um, where are we with all the pipes and wires?
Anyone else have that one? Hey, trustee Annie?
Uh, so my five are all up there, but if I could add to it, um, maybe a little bit under eight, um, but to empower the commissions, uh, to give them better direction, uh, more power and a greater sense of importance.
Empower commissions?
Yeah.
What did you say? Okay. Trustee, anything else that was on your top five?
Is there anything up there but renewable energy?
Nope.
So that kind of fell under principle four, and I had but that gold TR2 and S2, and I think, as, I think, I think if we have a sustainable futures commission, then we need to give them something to work on.
Okay, so increase, um, we had a couple of goals in here.
Under sustainability.
Sustainable.
So there was support county and state efforts to expand the use of renewable energy and reduce reliance on fossil fuels.
And renewable energy. Anybody else have that one?
Yeah, I'm similar, not exactly.
Right, trustee Delman, do you have anything not listed?
Online have been taken.
Okay.
I'd like to add to economic sustainability.
Okay.
Um, and I'm not sure how to phrase this, but, um, bringing back essential services to town, so adopt, or pharmacy.
Yeah.
Et cetera.
Okay.
Yeah, it's done.
So trustee Williams, you have another one to move around?
Um, it was on a different, one of the different. Answer to a different question.
Okay. Okay, is there another one, trustee Williams, that's not covered under these ten?
No.
Okay, trustee Elson?
No.
Trustee Farrell?
Good.
Rogan?
Can I bring up one more? Even though I don't have it written down?
It's fine, we're not going to check your words.
Cause I think we can keep going, but, um, I'd like to, uh, I don't know how to phrase it again, but, um, improve uh, staff efficiency, we do, uh, eliminating redundant work, and specifically, why do we have two public hearings for ADUs? Why do we have two public hearings for development reviews? I think there's a lot of excessive.
Would you go, or say improve the code efficiencies? Um, or do you want it more of?
I.
Are you saying, I'm sorry, because it goes to planning commission, they have two public hearing there?
And then, then we have a public hearing, like for an ADU.
Has one and then.
And then we have one, and you have to prepare two of them. And it's an ADU. Why do you have to spend two days preparing one and another day preparing another one? You could be doing so much better other things with your time. So whatever, however, you can put that into the English language.
Okay, can it, or trustee Danny?
Um.
I think that's it. You think you got all five of them? Then you're good. Okay, so of, of five, that 11 is not bad to guys, to, you know, come up with this many options. So, again, as trustee Datty kind of alluded to, you know, we do have a planned framework within the comp plan that the community has already given somewhat of their blessing to these five guiding principles. So we would, once we decide if we want this many, or we want to try to get them into fewer, we will then make sure that they fall under one of these categories. So, um, mayor, do you have an, an idea of how you'd like to move forward with this many options?
Um. I, let's, let's go around and vote on them again.
You want to multi-vote your top three and see what we come out with for five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, it's fun. So I guess, Dolores, if you, you can take off your.
And tally?
Yeah, yes, we'll do a new tally. Um, I've never been multi-voting on a computer, so I don't know how that works. Other than if each of you tell us just your top three, and we'll see which rises to this.
May I make a suggestion that we move this, the television a little bit more this way?
We don't have an audience here today.
Yeah, that's just a, if it's possible.
Yeah, just don't bump your head, bump your head when you stand up.
Short enough that I stay sitting.
Great, thank you. So should we go around and say which are top three?
I think you'll have to, you will give us a number if that works, and then at the end, we'll see where they come out.
Okay.
And these would be just your main top three. I mean, we know that all of these are very legitimate goals. Oh, I wanted to do one more thing between, before that. Is there anything staff had that don't fall under any of these categories?
Great question.
Erin, did you have anything over there?
No, absolutely.
Okay. Trace, your phone, did you have something that doesn't fall under one of these categories? Okay, Tracy? I agree with it. Dolores? And then how? You're good too?
What about you?
I have, um, I have my list, but I, I think when you're covered, I'll double check it, that I think.
Okay, well, trustee Delman, we'll start with you then. What are your top three?
My top three are one, four, and five.
Okay. Um, yeah, we should have probably done a spreadsheet, huh?
Yeah.
Dolores, can you throw up the list? Can you share it on the Zoom?
Is it not there?
No.
Share your screen.
It wasn't an issue until you started at my numbers, so.
Now?
It's, it's working on it. There we go, got it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thanks for telling us.
One, four, five.
Okay, I'm going to do it this way now.
Trustee Datty? Um. It's hard.
Now that I'm looking at this list, and I'm like, okay, I, in no particular order.
No, it does not.
I'm just going to pick three.
Just three that would be really in two years.
Yeah, yes.
Forty-eight meetings, not even, you're down to about.
Okay, well, so I know that affordable housing is on its way. I'm going to say number seven. Um.
You want to give me some?
Number one, but I feel like, can we go with like?
We can, we'll find two.
And I'm trying to think like between A and B. For me, economic, economic sustainability, I don't know if it's so much about not being grant dependent as it is attracting and retaining businesses. I'm like, again, it comes back to those essential services, like I feel like that's like an all-encompassing, like.
Okay.
Providing essential services, but including businesses. Um, and then, um, and then I would say I'm going to assume the complan is. I'm going to say number five.
One?
No, actually, fire hazard mitigation is more important, three.
So three, five, seven.
Three, seven, three, and, and one, one, three, seven, one, three, seven, thank you.
Two, two, seven, all right.
Okay, so I would have to start off with three, largely because if we burn down in summer, everything else is moot. Um, that being said, I don't know exactly what you can do about it. Okay, so three, uh, one and four.
And I would say three, one, and seven. I, it is hard. Three. One. Four.
All right, we're going to go seven, go back and start, three and four.
Three, but four.
All right.
Yeah.
Is there a pattern?
Um, number one had six votes. Four have five votes. And three had six votes. And seven had one, two, three. So, so one, number one was number one.
Okay.
Number three was next.
Fire mitigation. Okay.
And.
Seven, eight, seven.
Seven only had three, okay? One, two, three, four, five, number four had five.
Eastern corridor.
Those are the top three.
Okay, now that doesn't mean you can't accomplish more than three, of course. So the next two would have been.
The next one would have been number seven.
Okay, safety and lockability. Okay. Alan?
And then the last one, I got one vote, was number five.
Yes. Okay. All right, so that means, I, I heard a couple of you say you're going to kind of make an assumption that the comp. kind of make an assumption that the comp plan is gonna move forward, and we're going to pass that to our board. I think, I think that's legitimate. And I think that just remains, that will be a priority already. And working will start somewhat, probably coming up with some identifying factors on its own as well. Okay, so that would be, if we wanna fine tune, number one of it, um, if we want to look at describing it more as, like securing our, or, or, I'm trying to think of some good adjectives.
Again, I think it's economic independence and sustainability, something along those lines.
And that would, maybe that could actually pertain to not only us as a town, but to help our local businesses to turn, to, to gain economic stability and sustainability as well, so. Okay, so maybe what we do is we can work on, um, taking those and then developing some action steps that are more pertinent, more detailed into the essential services and not becoming so grant dependent. You know, and, and coming up with some of those we need that, does that sound reasonable? Okay, and then, uh, I believe trustee Datty, you already had referred what, um, what goal on the comp plan that fit in, what guiding principle?
For the essential services.
And economic.
Yeah, it was ED three. It's under guiding principle number two.
Anything more? No, time. We're just saying which, where does economic development, sustainability, and.
And actually, it does talk about businesses and services, so actually, it says here to prioritize the attraction retention of businesses and services that allow Lions residents to meet more of their daily needs close to home.
Okay, so guiding principle number two.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
No, three.
No, three?
No, two.
Guiding principle two.
Oh, sorry, guiding principle two, yes.
Number three.
Yes.
Okay, so that looks like number one. We can, did you have any ideas trustee Williams about how to, in regard to what you started with, becoming not so grant dependent, did you have ideas?
Of course not.
Okay. I assume it, you know, something like, we might have to look at someday having, um, or going out for a potential street tax or something like, I mean, some of those things might have to happen.
Sounds to me like some kind of taxation.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's gonna be hugely impactful.
Yeah.
We are all, we sure.
Fire mitigation was number two. Then which of our goals does that fall under?
Number three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's interesting, we've heard feedback though that, you know, like, I kinda mentioned it, number one, like protect the quality of life, like that's a lot, like the environment and what is a lot why people moved here, we didn't have that. You know, if the, there's a fire uphill from us, that's going to contaminate the stream and impact the river, and if there's not the river, like that's, people value that for quality of life, and so, and it was just interesting, like I, I think it, you know, definitely falls under three, like that's where we see it as, but we did hear, we've heard a lot of feedback, or people say like, actually, we feel like this is, you know, one, it can really impact the quality of life, that's why people come to line, so.
So it falls under two guiding principles.
Yeah.
Which.
That makes it even stronger.
Yeah.
How about eastern corridor? Which guiding principle?
I think, would that be four?
Yeah, managing growth.
This. I wanna get ahead of myself, I shouldn't. Anything else in particular with comp plan that falls under? That's kind of economic sustainability too.
Yeah, see, I, I see four is a tactic for number one, so number one's a strategy, four is a tactic. So there's a mix between tactics and strategies here, so.
Well, maybe that's what we'll bring back, cause our next step will be to put this in some form of a document with measurable action plan and those sorts of things, so we just wanna try to capture it initially here. Safety and walkability.
Oh, I have that one. Um, that one is under principle four, I believe it's school tier two, to maintain and improve existing active transportation infrastructure to provide comfortable opportunities for walking and basically.
Guiding principle number?
Oh, sorry, that was number four.
Four, four.
Guiding four and tier two.
Anything in particular there other than probably this, a sidewalk assessment? Bike lanes, getting involved with Dr. Cog and Bull, the kind of digital transportation for funding?
Uh, yeah, working with CDOT for safety. So I know CDOT's business is to move traffic.
It is.
And so, um, but I really don't wanna wait until there's a worse accident on Third and Main or Third and Broadway.
So things like installing more flashing lights at intersections and all that.
Yeah.
Or even having crosswalks.
Well, we'll do, yeah, we can determine the methods, but, um, I think it, yeah.
Flashing lights really work, cause I think it creates a false sense of security and cars don't often stop. My son almost got hit, so scary.
Well, we can, I mean, we can determine which are the most effective mitigation.
The thing is, they're all CDOT's crossing, so they have to give their point of blessing if they think it's warranted or not, because they agree with you.
Yeah.
They, they don't like them necessarily. They don't mind them in town where it's twenty miles an hour, but out at forty miles an hour, they hate it.
Well, yeah, in town it is twenty-five miles an hour.
But I mean, just depending on where, I mean, at one point, people wanted a Stone Canyon, and they moved up at the stoplight, and then they wanted it where it posted, they really didn't like that, cause it was not at a corner. It's not a logical place for traffic, they're actually being told to speed up there. You know, so, um, it's just again, we have, different boards have different views on this, and some people felt strongly, you still need one at third, some feel we need one at Lomond Johnson, some people need one at the end of main, they want one on every block. And I do think that will eventually, people will become, when you come through Lions, it'll might change how people look at that. But, um, those are things that, um, we can get into more detail with if, as we get into, to more specific plans. So if you were to end your term, I want you to look at that real quick, if you were to end your term with those five things, um, having made progress toward those, could you feel good about your tenure? Okay, does it seem manageable, realistic?
Absolutely not.
None of these have a, like, none of these are like, they all are, are, the different measures we'll, we'll put into place, but none of them are like build a rec center into you. So, you know, these are all very, we can put more specific action plans under each one.
I think you're, if you were going to propose a tax increase, trustee Williams, you would have to pair that with the rec center. It would be like a double.
Oh, that's true.
It would have to be like side by side.
Rec center, swimming pool, um, and streets, yeah.
Well, and then, once we, um, once we settle on these, and we settle on the performance metrics, then we'll have a regular check-in. So, you know, I'm not sure if it's every meeting or every other meeting, but how are we doing in our goals, how, what's happening with our work plan?
Well, and then I think too, this will also give boards and commissions, once we have a goal, then you guys can go and say, okay, sidewalk assessment, which group do we wanna work on that, and give them something to work on that's actually measurable that you want them to work on instead of putting their efforts in splintering into something that's not one of your priorities.
My only concern is that we're focusing on five goals and.
And the comp plan.
Ideally, I would love to have a goal for each commission, and I look at the number of commissions, we don't have, we haven't chosen enough goals to meet each commission's mandate, like I'm looking at the sustainable futures commission, for example, and I'm like, okay, whatever we're doing here, I don't see how they're, I mean, I just don't see them, which one?
Number ten.
No, but out of the five, we just chose, so that's, that's, that's my concern.
They would, they could be working on fire hazard mitigation.
Okay, so somehow, I'd love to see the commissions connected back to these five, you know? Um, we'll do that.
Well, there's nothing saying too, that you can't, I mean, none of it, you didn't pick any utilities in engineering either. And so, you know, if some of these that are left, like I said, it's not that you, you can pick all eleven if you want, it's just, we need to be realistic, if you wanna really get something done in the next twenty-three months, you, we need to focus. But there's nothing saying you can't set a goal or two, like for number ten, and give it to the UEB or Sustainable Futures, or Planning Commission, if you want them to look at code, we can still add those, this is just gonna be where you guys are focusing your efforts, and then this fall, where you're gonna put your budget.
Sure. So maybe, can we do something like what you've just suggested? So we're very specific to, you know, the, these five, the top five that we have chosen as a group.
Yes.
But that we look at all eleven and assign.
Absolutely.
But that also goes back to that comp plan, in my hope that the comp plan will help guide these, so that we are getting, I think commissions, and, and I'm gonna pick on the recreation center, for example. You know, I think Parks and Recreation, there are people that that's the reason they join it, because that's what they want, without really thinking about how, and, and the process to get there. And there's a lot to, to, to accomplish that kind of a thing, which is why it's been a twenty-year already wish, so. I guess my point is, is to making sure that we've all have agreed that these eleven are genuinely important, that we could use it as, as a, I don't need to repeat myself, I get it. I think.
One of the parking options is one that's not sure which group.
I know a group, the Economic Vitality Commission already has a subcommittee working on parking.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, and I actually think that the.
The planning commission.
Planning commission, they like.
They need to.
This is why we need to have that meeting with.
Yes, yes. Have we talked about having that quarterly?
Yes, the mayor and I talked about it today, she agreed that we need to get that scheduled.
Thank you.
As well as, we're going to work on, um, getting each board and commission in front of you twice a year, we're gonna get them on the schedule now, so there's no reasons that they're not coming in and giving you their reports. So I am fine with having eleven, we can list all of them. I just want you guys, you know, to, to know what you really wanna get done, and that's where we're gonna put budgetary efforts toward as we move forward over the next few years. The rest of these, I'm fine with that, we can definitely, address those, and I, I, you know, for me, infrastructure is a big one, I wanna get capital improvement plans.
Dolores, I lost audio, it sounded like.
Is the little blue button on this compute, this little thing?
I can hear again now, it was, it got, it was muted for a sec.
Okay, there we go, sorry.
Yep, no worries.
So, um, we can certainly do that as well, but we wanna take our lead from you, so. We will take this to the next step, if you guys are good with that, and start putting down some more specific actions and assignments for staff and boards and commissions.
I, I, I think this could use a little bit more refinement, cause it's just a linear list.
Yes.
I, I, I really think you should think in the form of a pyramid, with the strategy at the top, and the tactics that achieve that strategy. Cause you can look at like, um, improve staff efficiency, empower commissions with better education, as tactics to a larger strategy of just getting more out of what we have. And in some sense, that could even be a tactics for number one, right? If we can empower our commissions more, maybe we don't have to spend as much on outside consulting and et cetera. So I really think we should try to pyramid this and do a strategy tactic.
Yeah. A lot of these could roll up for sure into strategies, you know, parking could roll up into economics sustainability. So we might find out, you know, when, when Victoria and staff work on this, we might, I have a feeling, well, what we'll see is strategies that include most.
So if you have specifics from your questionnaire today, you know, that you wanna make sure we are building into that, feel free to share them with me, and we'll get them built into, um, a broader plan here, we just wanted to make sure, to see how close you guys all are on the same page, or if there's some differing opinions here, but it, it is pretty easy to come up with your top five, actually, like I said, eleven's not necessarily bad either. So we can try to do that. Other, did you wanna try to do that today, now? I mean, we have, we have a half hour.
What else did you have planned?
The only other thing that we really, um, the mayor was thinking she might have, you know, some other ideas you wanted to cover, but the only other thing I wanted to talk with you about is our mission, vision, and value statement, that was included in your packet as well. That is getting, um, that has been in place for quite a while. And we weren't gonna try to tackle it tonight, I really just wanted for you to either give a nod that you still, still feel this is pertinent to us, or do we wanna have a separate session with the outside facilitator, or someone else come in and help us to review that and update it?
Victoria, when was this created?
This one, I think, was like twenty, I wanna say, it might have been thirteen.
Before the flood?
Um, which is really interesting, because resiliency was listed as one of the values.
Yeah, well, and I'm curious as to why you wanted us to review it, do you feel like?
Well, I just, I wanna give you that opportunity, if you're, if, if we feel this needs updated, it, cause it has been a while, and some, you know, some organizations do it more frequently. When we first did this, um, there was kind of a dilemma of the council, the trustee seated at the time, that was, is this a mission and vision for our town? Or is it for our internal organization, or is it for us as a board? And there was some struggle with that. But we had a facilitator. Let's try to think, this one was Corinne Peterson, or if it was someone else, but it was an outside facilitator, and they really looked at it as the town, as an organization, what we provide to the public. And so, um, and they, they wanted it to be kind of unique. And, you know, like their vision statement, it was, I always thought that was kind of cool, but, you know, a place we can all be proud of to call home, but others can't wait to visit, it just fits, it just really fit at the time. As well as some of the rest of these, but they spent a long time on it. So I don't know, how do you feel? I know some of you are much more experts at doing this than I certainly am. That's why we could bring in someone, or if you feel like this still fits, we can.
Personally, I found a single phrase that I wouldn't.
Okay.
Out the rest of it, I really like. And I looked at it a lot.
Okay.
I, I came down on the same thing, and I wonder if it's the same phrase.
Phrase I didn't like is not repeat the mistakes of the past.
Oh.
It's like, I don't know why you really wanna focus there.
Yeah.
That's true, yeah.
The phrase that, that, um, kinda stood out to me was deliver exceptional services. You know, when you think about what a town does or is, um, I think more about creating a place, creating a sense of place and community versus delivering services, delivering services is part of that. But I think there's a, there's a higher level mission than delivering services.
Oh, whereas in, under pride, where it talks about delivering quality services.
Mission.
Oh, at the very top. Oh, I see.
Kinda got, I got that.
Yeah.
So, so I liked the phrase, um, community ownership. And what would I, what I would hope to come out of an exercise like this is, you know what Boulder does? You know, all their snowplows, they name them.
Yeah.
I love that. So I'm like, sitting at the parking lot over, and one of them's named Darth Vader. Or, oh no, Darth Blader.
Yeah.
Did you just have a name you think?
It's just like, I, I think that would be really, things like that are really fun, if Lions had this, this fun with itself, and named our, I don't know, how many snowplows do we have?
Yeah, actually, we only have one. Yeah, actually, we only have one. Well, when you look at that, there's really not something here that can put the funding.
Yeah, yes. And it's funny that you've said that because I thought it would be cool to have some kind of a contest of naming. We called them the islands during the flood, but I don't think we should call them that anymore, obviously. But if we named our different areas, um, I mean, I'm still struggling with how we refer to the confluence. Like I thought personally, I find that like a little bothersome. So could it be a better, more interesting name and we really understood what that encompassed?
But geographically speaking, it really is the confluence.
It is, but it's, it just feels after the flood very, it has a heavy feeling to my heart. Where now it's such a beautiful place, you know, it's changed. So I don't know, that's just a a side note to like what you were saying and does that create pride? My neighborhood is called blah 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 or area or something like that.
How the neighborhoods decide on how they wanna be called.
You know, right, so maybe maybe we add a value for fun. Some something for fun, because we actually as a community have a hell of a lot.
We know how to have fun.
We have awesome Christmas parades and how we parade.
Mention the peacock parade.
The peacock parade. I mean, so we really are a fun town, so we should embrace that more.
You wanna say something about keeping our sense of humor and and appreciating every festival and parade or?
Well, and it's that, it doesn't play into that element of quirkiness?
It is.
I know, I'm trying to think, what would you name that?
Quirky.
I mean, it could fall under pride too. You know, and the type of community we wanna create.
I hear scrappy.
If you speak of it, if you speak to that, then this phrase for pride doesn't fit at all.
Well, I'm wondering how we get back to it.
Because pride is more than, I mean, services and governance doesn't necessarily create pride. It's that's kind of the boring stuff.
But it seems like it was more focused on governance.
It was.
Than it was on.
Okay. That's a good point. That's right.
It was um it was at a time, it was right after Mayor Vance online. It was, there was a big, there was a shock in just leadership in the community and in the region even at that point. There was, and they were trying to go from trying to up their professionalism a little bit. From being kind of just making decisions with each other. I think this really was to to set a tone of we're going to increase professionalism and respect each other and.
So and and that makes total sense because I do remember it and there was a lot of backroom dealings. You know, even my property, it's like, I don't know how the Boons ended up with this easement, you know, what's going on here?
Yeah, and so I do think it was at a time when there was just a change in leadership. And just tempo all over, you know, all over the nation. Trying to remember, we were just coming, it came out of the recession. Um, trying to remember it was happening politically or nationally at the time, but if it's time, it's time. And we don't have to keep this format and you guys can.
Well, I feel like we're already having a hard time coming up with five, only like selecting five goals for the next two years. And I feel like taking away from our short uh term to try and enhance this, which I feel is already a good guiding document. I would almost rather spend more time on that as opposed to this. That's my personal feeling.
Because it was a little short.
Yeah. Do you want me to try to make a couple tweaks like you just talked about? Okay, at the staff level, just bring it back to that help.
And you know, I'd I'd be interested in staffing, but on this and whether it's relevant and useful.
So we wanna add a little, a little maybe something here about our uniqueness and keeping things lighter.
And I I think that could totally fall under pride.
Maybe change that up a bit, okay?
But but do you think this has been effective since Mayor?
I think so.
I think so too.
Um, no group has changed it.
Yeah.
And so to me, that means it's, it was pretty universal, you know, over the different terms we've been through with. As I said, right after that was the flood and then rebuilding and the last board didn't even address.
We'd never, that's the first time I've seen it. I don't remember it per se, but I'm sure I saw it.
Yeah, so maybe Mayor, we can work on this on on Monday. Sure, you can kind of fine tune this and bring it back to the group.
Sure.
Um, and in regard to naming, um, on your next agenda, actually, the mayor's gonna bring up, can we rename the Dirt Bike Jump Park? Because it's so confusing.
Nobody can ever see. I didn't know that.
I talked to Director Tauscher about that today and he said absolutely. It was named by the people that put together the funding for it, but.
Who never had to say it out loud.
They can rename it. So if you wanna do some fun, it doesn't even have to be the Lions Bike Park. It could be whatever you wanna call it.
Well, could we have a contest?
Probably middle school too. I think that might be a better age to give them something.
Sure.
Are there improvements planned for that?
Yeah, yeah, they're already done and under contract.
And did someone respond?
He's coming, they've said today, what is that day, June? I think he said they'll be here for two weeks.
I, yeah, we.
Okay.
I think two weeks in June and then it's done.
Yeah, the contracts on the, the contracts on the next board meeting, the upcoming, May sixteenth. And um it'll be scheduled probably the first couple of weeks of June.
And it'll be done and then they'll do an annual maintenance plan for it.
So I have a question. There was a guy who sent an email asking about that. Are we to respond or how do we or not respond or go back and forth to see who responds?
You know, like you, you all received one individually from the same person this weekend too. Really, it took a lot of time because it took three or four trustees writing us in how to respond to this. So I think the best thing is just to forward it to me and say, um, I'll have, you know, Victoria and her staff answer this on our behalf. Um, unless it's something that you want to, I mean, there's gonna be certain things you might want to. But if you really don't know and it's something technical like this fire election, I'll bring it up during my report tonight because.
Did you guys get that?
Yeah.
Everybody got it. This gentleman took a lot of time to write a lot about the bike park, but it's already here on it.
Awesome, but maybe we could give him the naming piece.
Yeah, but anyway, I mean, that's the kind of thing we can, we can.
Talking about ownership in here. Yeah. Feel so strongly.
Yeah, just don't.
Don't, don't ever.
That's why I asked.
Yeah, but um I think Kim is back from um her vacation. She'll be flying home tomorrow, so she'll be back Wednesday. She loves these kind of confluence or these contests and remaining things.
Yes, she's really good.
We can have her jump on those. Okay, well, why don't we as a next step in regard to this then, um, staff, you have any other input? Aaron, good, Dave?
Um, sorry, Dave, to pick on the um.
Dirt Bike Jump.
No, the the pool and.
Oh, the recs, the recs. We're good. Um, we will take a stab at getting these put into an order. It's probably gonna come out at like ten instead of eleven. We will put up yours in your five order, but we'll include all eleven and come up with maybe boards and commission assignments as well.
And if you can roll them up so that they're fewer than eleven, I think that would be better.
I think that can, I think it'll probably be like, I don't, eight or nine, nine, ten, but we'll run that with you on Monday.
Okay.
And work from there and then we'll put it into a document that's measurable that we can put in your packet with.
Thank you.
How's that sound?
Good.
Okay.
I really like the idea of correlating with the boards and commissions directly.
Yep, and and again, that is how it used to be. I mean, we literally had the staff liaison who picked the lead on it. The board liaison and the board and commission and action steps and a date they needed to report.
Yeah. Yeah, that's measurable.
But then we had a flood.
Right.
And it took all our priorities over for just five years. So that's good. Okay, get back to that. Um, other items, what else was on the agenda this year? We can get through that. worksheet, top priority metrics for success. Oh, how to fund them. Yeah, that will be a fill-in exercise as well, probably at the department head level to start brainstorming some of these things and try to bring it back to you. But that really is the key to many goals. That especially those that are more physical, you know, connection, trail connections and build out and mitigation, those all take money. So we will have to um get creative with that. In regard to grants, just, just kind of as a as a talking point, knowing that the federal grants are going to be prevalent for the next three years this federal build back dollars. Are we comfortable with trying to utilize those as much as we can over the next three years with a weaning off plan?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Take the money where we can get it.
Well, it's just, there's different opinions. We have some people in town that say don't accept any federal grants, you know, and that, so I just wanna make sure because that's a group we have.
Now, as we build the economic muscle to not need them, I think, you know.
We should take advantage of those while they're here because they're not gonna be here forever. It's gonna be like a few years.
Yep.
And then I guess they're going to go away unless there's another.
That's so big of a way.
Yeah.
I I feel like that's more of a long-term goal. I don't know if we can accomplish that in two years. Can we make it like five?
Just don't want something else to happen.
I just wanna make sure I've got that right, but you don't want us to stop pursuing.
No. If there's money up there.
Okay, that's good.
And you have done amazing.
Yes.
The only other thing I'd be interested to hear is when you did the worksheet that just kind of got your brain thinking. What are the things came up that you um would be willing to share with me? Like what visual improvements do you feel we could make? Are there um, what were some of?
So.
Right here, um.
About the drive into town?
Yeah.
That one?
What, what sort of things?
I think I already mentioned a couple of things because I was in the car with you during that tour. And for me, it was lights. There were two large sections that I have always seen for eleven years. Every time I drive into Lions.
And they're both in the county.
And they're both, yeah. Well, our, hold on, what about the one right to the west of the farmet? That's within the town of Lions. It's not.
They're both county.
But there's, but they are in the IGA.
They are in the IGA.
Does that give us any power?
Oh, sure, sure. And I mean, we can still, we can put it in front of it. We're gonna be meeting with the commissioners. The county commissioners wanna come and have dinner with you guys in early June. And just talk about um issues. So that's another reason it's good. So when we meet with them, you can tell them what we're focusing on. But we should go in there with a list for them as well. Because then we're gonna start our negotiations with them for the long-term tenure ICA. So this is to develop some rapport with them and um but it it's really usually, usually we meet twice a year with them. They come to town and we meet at a restaurant, they buy dinner. And the public can attend, so it's kind of odd, but we found that in restaurants, it's like so um, in the summer months and they weren't willing to turn on their radio, their music and stuff because of other customers. So they said we can meet here too and cater whatever we wanna do, but they wanna meet with you in June.
Great.
And start discussions. So that's really important because we will be looking at a ten-year planning agreement of that.
So will we have a special workshop then to focus on those questions and priorities?
You'll probably meet first and then um we will from there determine what you guys because it's supposed to come out of the comp plan. We're supposed to determine what do we want.
Well, I I see the Eastern Court or directly related to Boulder County and that IGA.
Well, and then the SEMEX parcel.
And the SEMEX.
And they're, they're getting closer in their negotiations apparently.
Okay.
And SEMEX um for, I think we're gonna hear this week that they are going to be applying for an extension of their mining. And then this Friday, they are very excited. Who's all going Friday? Okay, they are going to, we have to be promptly there, ready to go by two o'clock. They're gonna start with a tour of the plant, so clothes, clothes shoes. They'll give us our other, you're supposed to watch that video. And then they're gonna take you to the north side to Dow Flats.
Oh.
So that you can see what they're talking about while they say mining the next ten years.
Yeah, the committee.
I thought that was cost prohibitive for them.
It, it, they want to continue mining. It's cost prohibitive to stop because then they're going to have to truck materials into their pond.
Down to the south side.
From Wyoming.
So um we can have um up to ten people go. But he said it'll take the full two hours, so it'll be two to four, but we will be ready to go at two.
So should we meet, meet here at one forty-five?
We can decide if we do. We hear, he said there's plenty of parking there.
Yeah, there is. So anything is to back.
Coming back for my trip at the end of the week, if I do, then I'll do.
I just, you can have ten. So just let me know as soon as you can.
Okay.
Right now, Kim is going to go, Phil wants to go. Aaron, have you been up to? Okay, so right now there's nine of us. Okay, but that will give you, you guys, it will blow your mind when you see Dowland flats.
And one thing I realized last time as I was heading to that committee meeting is I hadn't realized where that parcel was up until that point. And so as you're driving in, just look to your right and your left. It's literally on either side of the entrance.
Straddles that type of process. So the, the mining is on the north side. It runs through that conveyor belt that is not water running through there. That's rock, running over to the plant to become part of the aggregate. But um they're excited about you coming and I think they really wanted this timing because of whatever announcement is that is about to come up.
And then we'll be parking on the south side. There's that.
Park on the south side, yep.
I'm the Boulder County IGA land use, so I saw the case last Friday. We were talking about, we're preparing to, this part of our comp plan, reach out and talk about land use and planning. While that also is going to involve other agencies, Boulder County, well, the largest. So it's interesting that we're waiting for the comp plan to inform the IGA, but it's kind of impossible to start ha- not having those conversations now. And we're gonna start those at the end of May. So I think that's one thing to think about how we approach that. If you just would want, right now we have a PCDC Subcommittee and Clarian, our consultants, myself, meeting with Boulder County. But how we wanna approach that if it's like kind of warming up to this IGA discussions, um, because that alone from the town plan, which is going to inform those discussions, so it's all kind of circular. So we should think about, I don't know, how we wanna approach those meetings, who's going in in about, yeah, a couple of weeks, so.
Okay, and and this is something previous boards, this has only been done once in my tenure because it was in twenty well, twenty eleven, maybe, well, twelve. And so this only comes up once over ten years, but we also held kind of a session like this. And we made a list of what items are the most important to us in our planning area, what are non-negotiables?
Yeah.
And what are negotiables? And then giving in an executive session, giving, um, at that time, they chose the mayor and myself and would have been the planner, but he was not a full-time planner. Um, they gave us the negotiating parameters to attend those meetings. And then we would do that in between, you know, your meetings. But it is important to do it and to negotiate, probably like I said, executive session, because this is your one shot for ten years.
Yeah.
And what do you wanna get out of it? What do we wanna ask them for? What are we willing to give up? Because they're going to come in basically wanting anything that is aesthetically important to them from an open space and you shed perspective to become open space. We need to know, you know, how far are we willing to go? Kind of like this SEMEX IGA is a sub IGA of the Boulder County IGA. And the reason that is, is because I, Boulder County has first right of refusal on all of Dow Flats and all of SEMEX on the south side, all the way to high, you know, both sides, it's thousands of acres. So their intent is to take it and convert it to open space. So if we want anything um, along that, that is our time to negotiate that.
And who negotiates on behalf of Boulder County?
They usually assign one commissioner and chief of staff. It's a very small group.
So Victoria, what, I mean, if you were to anticipate, what is it they?
want? In other words, oh, and then what should we be making sure that we're thinking about to ask?
Well, that's why.
Because I don't want to go into this I.
Yeah, that's why we'll do it in an executive session.
Okay.
So that you guys can instruct negotiators. I mean, if you say, you know, a shooting range is off the table in our planning area, then we go in there with that. If you guys say heck, leave Dow Flats and make it a big reservoir, we can go for that. I that we can go in with our planning area within three miles of us.
And what kind of power do we have? Do we have quite a bit of power?
We do. Um I will I'll get together the worksheet. You'll have homework. Okay, I'll give you a similar worksheet that is going to give you show you the parameters and you can literally look at it and say, okay, what am I willing to do up the north side rain? What are we willing to do down the south? What do we want to do out east? And.
And are we going to have one executive session for the?
Just for negotiating parameters.
For for Boulder County IGA, but what about the CEMEX?
That's part of it.
That's part of it. It'll all be together.
Yeah. More than one because after we meet with them a few times, we'll come back and update you and say this is an unnegotiable for them. They do not want any building on this area.
What power do we have over CEMEX?
Um. You know what? They want sustainability projects out there.
Yeah.
They want to take that from what they consider the worst air quality producer in the county and convert it to something renewal and sustainable. And so we have enough power in that Lyons people are sucking in the worst of the air quality produced, right? We're the closest.
Yeah.
And so they because we already have it in a contract they have they they just honored that with us. They know that's our only place to to grow. And they just want to make sure we grow correctly and not do something like Rock Creek out there.
Yeah, understandable. Um I I know at one point CEMEX was considering burning tires.
Yeah.
And there was a big brew haw-haw in town. A lot of people fought it and CEMEX gave up. Is is or will the discussions be along these lines? Are they planning on doing that again?
No, that's between SEMEX and Boulder County. And they're in negotiations right now.
Right.
So we haven't heard those yet, but it does appear that the first rights remains with Boulder County and all.
And um just so everybody knows, I've been sitting on this committee with CEMEX for the last eight months with with your son. And they've been very upfront. They actually have somebody who is an environmental manager whose name is Scott Harkins.
He'll be there.
His job, if you have any questions about the air quality, I've got numbers here baseline emissions from 2018 about sulfur dioxide, nitrous oxide particulate matter. I don't quite understand all the chemistry behind it. If you have any particular questions, they can give you those answers.
They will tell you tires are better producing of air quality than what they're doing now. This is the only plant in their international portfolio that isn't.
Yeah, I've heard that that the tires were actually clean. It's just there was a conception perception here in town that they.
Because it smells terrible.
Um I heard they can burn them like like it doesn't matter.
Yeah, the kiln is I mean, we'll probably see the kiln.
Yeah, you will.
When you walk past the kiln, it gives off so much heat.
It's very interesting.
But everything coming out of this.
The plant manager will be there. Scott, the environmental manager will be there and my class of the government will be there.
Did you talk about noise ordinance as well? Because that plant is pretty loud.
Oh, we haven't talked about noise, but we can bring that up. I mean, any of these questions, they are so honestly, I have found them to be quite transparent. And I've been really impressed about how forthcoming they have been. And so I think it's a really good time. If you have any questions, any doubts, anything whatsoever, any bias, please bring it up.
Yeah.
So they can answer that directly. This is your chance. It is.
Okay, anything else um from your worksheet that any of you want to share on my sheet finally? You know, what's holding the community back from being all we can be? Is there anything visually that's really gnawing at you that you like to see staff focus on? If anything were possible, what what would you put here if you could?
Coming in from the east. I used to think this all the time when I lived in New York and came out here four times a year. It's like that is a damn wide highway with zero appeal. And I know that there were plans for that that ended up getting scrapped.
No, they're not scrapped.
Well, I just thought they were not funded uh to to improve that because you can't do a thing about those properties that are counting.
I guess I should clarify east of 36 or west?
I mean, west of 36.
Oh, west of 36, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, that that particularly like from Stone Canyon on up. It's just a super wide highway that just has no no appeal whatsoever to it. I don't know how you fix that exactly.
Right, C dot, right?
That's all C dot?
I wanted bigger.
So see that when we meet with C that see that very clear. They'll say our job is to move traffic as safely and efficiently as possible. Your job might be pet traffic, but ours is motor vehicle traffic. How do we get these 2 million cars a summer through your town? And so it's not that they don't support the multimodal and things like that. It's just their primary goal as a state agency is to move traffic safely. So there's just a discrepancy there. Not that they would not be willing to do something aesthetic, but they're like everyone else. They're so far behind on infrastructure improvements. Where do you get the extra to do the pretty stuff? So.
That's also not to say that that I'm pleased with the way it looks east.
Yeah, there are plans out there. And we do have the second leg of a traffic study. We're sharing the cost with Mr. Tamborolo on that.
Okay.
And to see if we can get that to be more of a slower speed and reduce take out one whole lane in the middle. And make it more of a boulevard to to start slowing down traffic.
And and someone even brought up the notion of a traffic circle.
Well, around about.
That would be so awesome.
At 3666 end of the end of the week.
Yes.
The people keep the arts in the middle.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have one that changes every?
Discuss those like you guys have a good contact.
Very good strong.
Okay. So those those things are still.
But what's really important to our relationship with C that is our relationship with Boulder County.
Okay.
Um Boulder County Regional Transportation um which is also connected to what's called the regional council of governments. They're the ones who manage all of the big dollar projects that are going to happen in the Boulder region. And we have to be at the table and we have to they want you to come project ready. And that's our problem. We don't ever have the money to do the assessment or the survey or the study is usually, you know, 10 to 20 grand to determine is it feasible? Because if it is, we can get on the list. But it's putting away enough money because but we never have enough money in that transportation pot to even take care of our streets, let alone the state highway.
So when you refer to capital improvement plans, that's what you're referring to?
One of them.
Okay.
Um we already have a a street paving assessment and wanting, you know, you guys will have to decide how much you want to start putting away toward that every year. Because there comes a point where you can all streets could be overlaid or what is it? A third of the cost? Is that what it was? A third of the cost of having to rebuild a road that's gotten so deteriorated, you have to take it all out and start over. And so it goes against our logic when you see a really bad road and you're like redo that road. But really, we got to take care of those that are just look ugly, all the cracked ceiling to save them for 10 to 15 more years. The others are already have to be able to rebuild. And so that's really hard in your logic to think about is because of people like on the north side of town. They're like rebuild our roads and it's like we want to rebuild your roads. That's going to take three times the money. But if we do that, the others are going to turn by the time we get to those are going to deteriorate so far. We're going to really cost them.
How much longer does it last to fully rebuild the road?
Oh, fully rebuilt will be 25 to 30 years.
To the other, I don't know that you're giving it 10 more years, but
Yeah.
Five again, the whole plan.
We have a whole memo you'll be getting on pavement management. Because that seems to be something we hear a lot from residents is how ugly the streets are and how bad they are. But we have to pick because some roads, it's not just the road. If we remove it, we've got to replace the water sewer under it, increase the storm drainage, add carbon gutter. That's a much more costly project than just going and doing that quick overlay in the subdivisions that already have all that stuff. So it's almost like we need to take care of all of those again first and then come back with this master plan and a tax increase or whatever it's going to take to do all these street rebuilds or bond, whatever it's going to take. Those are the ones that keep us up. So, okay. It's on infrastructure assessments.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's there.
Number nine.
Okay.
Anything else that sticks out to any of you from a you know, that's that's an easy um or something that is low hanging fruit beside these goals that take much, much effort and coordination?
Well, one I just I don't know that this is answering your question from that standpoint, but I did have back to the parking and saying that there's two commissions there that are interested in it. And I'm wondering if there's a way to divide that you know, you look at it from a land use standpoint and that's the PCDC, but the economic vitality looks at it from the business's standpoint. And one of the things I really have wanted to do and I have had a couple of conversations is to start getting our businesses to come together and I think they've even there is and they actually are. It sounds like the Business Guild group or something. You know, and and saying well, what are you all willing to do as a consortium?
Yeah.
And then what can we do to support you? But something has to be owned here.
I agree.
And so how do we and so maybe the Business Economic Vitality Commission can help that while we're working on the where?
I think our chamber has Chamber is a good group. I think they're a good social group. I I think they're they're good at, you know, communicating things outward. I almost wonder if it's time for Lyons to shift from having a chamber to a downtown development authority.
Yeah.
And really having them get some teeth and some money behind economic development instead of just socially getting together. But I would love to do a workshop on that. Well, the main street program, you know, they would prefer to see something like that. Not that you can't still have a chamber, but only less than I think it's like only 30 or 40% of our businesses even belong to a chamber. It's um I think there's a shift other communities have made that make a business district or downtown development authority. And then it shifts their role significantly.
So well, we're we're at 10 till.
Okay.
I'm always cracking cracking about um meeting time. So let's yeah, let's wrap up the workshop.
Yeah.
Since we're done and take a break.
I'm good. I know this wasn't a rivety like bringing in all day retreat thing, but I wanted to just hit the highlights.
It was great.
And have you guys start talking about where you want to put your efforts in. Like I said, when we get into budgeting then um it really it it helps. A lot of communities went to to budget based priorities several years ago when we were in our flood recovery and we haven't really made that leap. But that's really using your priorities of where you're going to put your money. Um instead of um getting really splintered and and you know I it's kind of like our our goodwill fund. I always wondered why don't we give leaf money and then they turn around and fund our projects. It's kind of a strange thing, but we'll get into that. But when we get into budgeting, we'll staff will use these to try to remind you. This is where you said you wanted to make some progress.
Yeah.
Looks like I'm good for Friday.
Oh, awesome. Great. All right. So do you guys while you got a minute, do you want to meet here or do you want to meet there?
I'll have to meet there.
Meet there.
I'll be kind of tight for these.
All right, they said there's plenty of parking. Okay, two o'clock close tow shoes. You need to watch the safety video because I'll have you sign something.
Is it video or screens?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't missing something.
We just go to the main entrance, right?
Just go to the main entrance and they'll be there. They'll sign us all in. They'll give us our safety review and
You just have to park.
General the main parking lot.
Right, but what I meant is your the rear of the car.
Okay, we're going to take a 10 minute break.
We've got a bunch of people. Mr. Eric Low can't get enough. Oh, no. That was me when I, for a while. Should we get started? Are we ready? All right. I will, I'll call the Monday, May second, twenty twenty-two Lyons Board of Trustees Meeting to Order. Clerk Vasquez, can we please have the roll?
Yes, Mayor Rogan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Farrell.
Present.
Trustee Delman.
Present.
Trustee Doty.
Present.
Trustee Eddie.
Present.
Trustee Elton.
Present.
And Trustee Warren.
Present.
Thank you. We can keep going. Okay, great. Um, everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll read the land acknowledgement. We must acknowledge with respect as non-native people that the land on which we stand, live, and learn is the traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples. We also recognize the forty-eight contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. We'll take a reflective moment of silence. Thank you. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second for that motion.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to amend the agenda? Nope. Great.
We will vote.
This unanimously. Ah, all right. Now is the time for audience business. We don't have anybody here in the boardroom tonight. Is there anybody online who wishes to address the Board of Trustees? Um, you can either use the raise hand feature, turn on your camera, and I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record, and you will have four minutes.
Heidi Burke has her hand raised.
Heidi Burke, please go ahead. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, my name is Heidi Burke and I live in Lyons um, at two oh six Cobblestone Court. And I'm participating in this meeting, um, to share my thoughts about, um, the plan to do some fire mitigation in Bond Park. Is this the place and time where I should be speaking about that?
You bet.
Okay, so yes, I'm a parent and I'm an educator. Um, I have a passion for bringing back to children what we've lost, which is unrestricted learning in nature with friends. And I'm joining this meeting because I, along with several parents and educators, are concerned about the plan to mitigate the only wild spaces left in our town that the children and parents can walk to or hike to or bike to. And I just wanted to make sure that the city was aware that in these areas, children get to experience nature the way so many of us enjoyed it as children, which is wild and free. And when I say wild and free, I'm not, I don't mean that it's, you know, that the children are rebellious or that it's chaotic. When I say wild and free, I mean that the children get to think for themselves and adults are not always in control of their learning. And the reason for keeping it wild is, well, there are several, and there are many studies that are, um, you know, talking about this currently in our times, but children playing in nature on their own terms is becoming this lost ideal and no longer part of growing up. So we have to do what we can to preserve this. And I know that there are educators, including myself, that go there to teach science and geography and history and all the other subject areas. And I'm not sure if the city's aware of this, um, but there are children that go there to build forts, to encounter wildlife, to get dirty and wet there, muck about, catch things, and find, you know, wild spaces to hide in. And I don't know if you were aware of this, but the children who go there, they actually call it the Enchanted Forest. But I think it's more like a secret forest because it feels like something only the locals really know about, what make, which makes it a special place. And I think all of you can recall memories, really strong memories in your own childhood that most likely have something to do with being in a wild place or being in nature. And the reason you remember it is because it's important. And the research is showing that having wild nature experiences in childhood leads to having positive environmental values and behaviors towards the planet and towards the earth as an adult. And maybe we wouldn't be having these kinds of meetings if we had more of that in the world. And I just want to say that Lyons is filled with groomed and structured domesticated spaces, and this is the only.
I, I thank you so much. Thank you so much. Um, if you could just wrap up briefly, the four minutes are up.
Sure. Yeah, it's just, it's the only wild area left. And we don't really need another area with clear sightlines and manicured lawns to be exposed in the park. And, you know, I'm worried in, as well as many of us who are in this community, that it's going to attract more visitors to the area, and then it no longer becomes a secret place. So as you're making.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And I see Elena Hughes has a hand up. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Elena Hughes. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, my address is one four two Stone Canyon Drive. And I actually, um, I'm here on behalf of the PRC. I'm the Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and, um, I'm here in reference to, uh, the library, um, Story Walk recommendation that we have. And I'm wondering if it's okay if I can, if I can just say our, um, recommendation now. I'm on the East Coast and I have a six AM flight. Is it possible for me to just read our recommendation at this time, or can I submit it?
I, you can, I'm fine with you reading it at this time.
Okay, great. I'll try and be fast. Um, on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, Cara Baumann and Becky Loughlin of the Lyons Library District gave a presentation to the Parks and Recreation Commission to ask for our support for the Story Walks project. Story Walks entail the use of a chosen book for young people with each page on a separate post allowing a pathway at a park or other safe and inviting areas. The path, uh, excuse me, the pages are enhanced with interactive literacy activities. Books are changed out for a variety, for variety over time, and these walks spark interest in parks and their content. Um, increase, increased participation in the library network and our community of learning. There are currently about three hundred story walks in the country with thirty in Colorado. I believe she has a presentation with examples with really cute pictures. The company that Cara is working with has materials to withstand exposure and grant funding is also complete. The Parks Department would not be responsible for maintenance. Locations can include Lyons Valley River Park. Um, using stories that involve the natural world, wetland, and rivers and other parks locations can work as well. A walk that connects to the route past the library would be beneficial, possibly utilizing the new um, safe routes to school and bridge. The PRC wholeheartedly supports this concept and would like to see the Board of Trustees and staff explore details with Cara and her team on location and materials used. We feel this is an excellent use of our trails, parks, and ongoing literacy support for our community. Our young kids, kids will be inspired to learn because it's fun and develop and develops a lifelong habit of seeking knowledge. So we, we wholeheartedly support it, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, and if, if I were to submit this, um, where, who should I send this to, this written, um, recommendation?
To Clerk Vasquez.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, do you see anybody else?
That's it.
Okay. All right. I have two, you have two proclamations this evening. Um, the first is Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month. So I will read this proclamation. Town of Lyons, Colorado, Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month proclamation. Whereas local historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods, promoting economic, social, and environmental sustainability, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas archaeology and historic preservation are relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas the National Historic Preservation Act has had a profound impact on Colorado and historic places listed on the local, state, and national registers contribute to the revitalization and recognition of communities through heritage tourism and the preservation of historic places and archaeological sites that honor the diverse cultural, agricultural, natural, and built environments of our state. And whereas in Colorado, Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month is a celebration of our state's heritage observed by communities across the state. Now therefore, I, Holly Rogan, Mayor of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, do proclaim May as Archaeology and Historic Preservation Month in the Town of Lyons. The Board of Trustees, Town Staff, and I urge all citizens to support local archaeology and historic preservation efforts and participate in the archaeology and historic preservation events in town. And the next proclamation, I am pleased to read a proclamation by the Board of Trustees of the Town of Lyons recognizing the fifty-third annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May first through seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is a worldwide, time-honored, and vital part of local government. And whereas the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Town of Lyons hereby proclaims to recognize the week of May one through May seven, two thousand and twenty-two, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and to further extend our deep appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Dolores Vasquez, and our Deputy Clerk, Marissa Davis, for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community of Lyons, Colorado. Given under my hand and seal of the Town of Lyons, the second day of May, two thousand and twenty-two, Holly Rogan, Mayor, and let's have a round of applause for our clerk.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so Sergeant Chris is not going to be joining us tonight.
You saw his email?
I did. Yeah. Yeah. Um, but he says everything's fine. And so next up, we have the Consent Agenda. Um, Clerk Vasquez, do you read this into the record at this time? Okay, please do.
Item one, under Consent Agenda is the Resolution twenty-two dash forty-three, the resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, accepting public improvements of the First Avenue and Welch Port Water and Sewer Project. Item two is Resolution twenty-two dash forty-four, a resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, approving the First Amendment to the twenty-twenty-one installation and maintenance of seasonal landscape services agreement with CoCal Landscape Services Incorporated. Item three is Resolution twenty-two dash forty-five, the resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, approving an IDA with Boulder County for the opioid settlement. I'm not quite sure that title's correct. Item four is Resolution twenty-two dash forty-six, resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, ratifying the Third Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Murray Smith Incorporated for Design Services for the Fourth Avenue pedestrian bridge, trail connections, and street improvements project. Item five is Resolution twenty-two dash forty-seven, the resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, approving the Fourth Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Murray Smith Incorporated for On-Call Engineering Services. Item six is Resolution twenty-two dash forty-eight, a resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, approving a Professional Services Agreement with Horace Engineering Incorporated for Design and Right-of-Way Services for the St. Brain Regional Trail Project. Item seven is Resolution twenty-two dash forty-nine, a resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, ratifying the Second Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Northline GIS LLC. Item eight is Resolution twenty-two dash fifty, a resolution of the Town of Lyons, Colorado, approving the Fourth Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Murray. with Murray Smith Incorporated for Design Services for the Fourth Avenue Pedestrian Bridge Trail Connections and Street Improvements Projects. Item nine are the May accounts payable, and item 10 are the April 18, 2022, for
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Are there any items any trustee wishes to remove from the Consent Agenda?
Yes, number six, please.
Any others? All right, let's vote on the Consent Agenda as amended.
Passes unanimously.
Just, uh, Mayor Proton Farrell.
Yes, thank you. So I felt like when I was reading through this, um, that there were several years of history behind this project and impacts on multiple businesses, ditch company, land easements, rightaways, et cetera. But I vaguely remember a discussion of the previous board had about this, um, need to design the trail. And I think it would be prudent for us to get a better review, um, to really understand the scope and the challenges. Um, so I know that Tracy, I had forwarded some questions and, and you definitely provided some great feedback and an outline. But I kind of wanted to know, one, if everybody got to read it, and if not, I'd like to make a motion that we move this item to May 16th Agenda under General Business. Um, perhaps, or wherever is appropriate, that Mayor Rogan feels, um, to really kind of understand this a little bit more, because it's, it's pretty big. And I was just concerned about going into a contract before feeling confident that we all really have the the real understanding of it. So my motion is to move it. If not, we can discuss it to now.
So if we have a second, then we can have a discussion, correct Attorney Dittman?
So I think the correct motion would be to continue to a date certain. So it would be the, the following meeting on the 16th, I believe. So I think the motion should be, I move to continue this item to, uh, May, to May 16th.
Or, or if Tracy's prepared, we can also do it.
Um, I'm open to both. If Mayor Rogan, are you okay with that?
Yeah, if Tracy's prepared, I would love to be able to discuss it now.
Okay, then I resent my motion. So it's like page 76 in a whole packet.
Thank you.
I guess I, I, what are the questions and what publication are you looking for?
I think I would like to have an idea of the summary. If you could maybe verbally talk to us about what you sent today that outlined kind of, but I thought that was really good. But if you could, in your own words, help us with that. Okay.
So this is a trail that is, that will connect from the Welcome to Lyons sign at McConnell Avenue to Highway 36. And this is a project that we had funded in the past. And we did have to turn back the funding because we couldn't, um, you had to, we had to own all the land that the trail would be go across. And at that time, there is a section of the trail that would go over Highland Ditch property. But because of that funding source, which was Land and Water Conservation Fund, we couldn't utilize that funding when we turned it back. Um, so we revisited this project and we were able to get funding through CDOT. And they fully support this project. And so they will allow us to work with Highland if needed to do, uh, an agreement, a long-term agreement to utilize their property or do an acquisition. Uh, but we do have two choices for alignment right in that area there. Because the, the rest of the trail is all in town-owned property. It's on the old railroad property that is owned by the town. But there is a portion right, uh, past the distillery just south, or sorry, east of the distillery. We either need or would like to stay along the ditch there, which is owned by Highland. Or you could stay on our property and go between Clark's and the storage building you have there, which is actually on our property, but we have like a 50-year lease with them. So in that intersection there or that section where we would have to negotiate with either Clark's or Highland to put the trail in those, those areas. We have spoken to all the business owners along that trail. If we go the route of putting the trail between Clark's and staying on our property, the trail curves around across the corner of, um, our property that's being leased by the distillery, which is like their back patio. So they're not fully in support of that alignment because it cuts almost a third to a half of that patio area that they're leasing from us. And so their purport alignment is to utilize the Highland property section. And also, we have put in a lot of utilities just east of that storage building that Clark's has put there. We have utilities there that we've put in over the years. So there might have to be some relocation of those utilities. And that's an added cost as well. But other constraints, we are crossing three ditches. So we're gonna have to have ditch crossing agreements with each one of those ditches. And you're gonna have to have bridges to cross each of those. Philip and I did meet with Highland Ditch, I think it was in November. And they were open to working with us, um, and coming up with some solutions together if we want to utilize the property. But nothing's in writing. So this contract will allow us to go through environmental clearance. And then we can get right of way, we'll, they'll have a right of way consultant on the contract. So we can start working our negotiations with Highland or Clark's, whichever direction we decide to go. We can initially talk to both and see where we think is going to be the most feasible and then go that direction. But CDOT, we have to go through the URA, which is Uniform Relocation Act. So we have to go through their processes for that, and that can take months or even up to a year. And so that's, they have encouraged us to keep moving with this project so we don't lose the funding for them. I think it is staff's opinion that, you know, if we turn back a funding opportunity again, it may be harder to get, find a new grant out later down the road, but not necessarily true, but just it could serve as a challenge. But, um, so those are the basic challenges. Um, and right now with the funding available and the estimated expenses, we're not at a shortfall with this project. But there are some unknown costs, like the negotiation of with Clark's and Highlands. Don't know if there's going to be compensation, don't know, um, they're gonna, if it's just gonna be venting and lighting. So it's hard to estimate those costs. So there are some unknown costs. But we may have, we are always looking for opportunity to get more money in to support these projects. And we do feel like we have some other sources that would be in support of this project. And in particular, possibly Boulder County. They've already given some amount, and so maybe be able to support us additional. So I know that was a lot. So hopefully I answered some of your questions.
Yeah, um, you did. Thank you. I just find that sometimes when I'm reading through all of it, it, it gets a little bit, um, convoluted at times. It's hard. So I, I really appreciated hearing it. So I'm, I'm satisfied if anybody else is, has questions.
Anybody else have any questions?
I do. I think Boulder County part of that is the, is that more than the 30,000 that's listed here?
No, currently they have committed 30,000, but the town, um, has been speaking and working with them about potentially getting additional funding from there because it is part of their overall regional connectivity trail, you know, plan. So
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions from Sanders? Great. Thank you so much. Really appreciate that. So is there a motion to approve Resolution 2022-48?
I move to approve Resolution 2022-48.
Here, is there a second?
My second proclamation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hello?
Passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to Boards and Commissions, um, the Lyons Story Walk Proposal. Can we have a staff report, please?
We actually, um, we don't have a staff report. This was actually a request of the Parks and Recreation Commission. And Cara Baumann is here from the library to give you a background on this, um, topic. And you've already heard the recommendation from, from the PRC.
Great. Okay, it's Baumann.
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, everyone. Um, I know that, uh, the proposal was included in everyone's packet. Did everyone have a chance to, to kind of review the, the ins and outs proposals? Um, as Yelena said, the cute pictures, if you will. Slightly brighter lighting here.
Everyone was shaking their head.
Perfect. Thank you. I, it's just far enough away to see. Are there any particular questions that anyone has about this particular, how this works, what we would plan? What we're asking for. Uh, really, it's just that, um, you know, you've, you've seen the proposal. It's really just a great opportunity to kind of expand literacy activities. A lot of these popped up, of course, during COVID when we were trying to get folks outside. Um, and we didn't have a reliable funding source at that point, which we now do. So we would fully fund, fully maintain, um, work with Director Cosgrove and anybody else necessary to, um, work on the best location for this installation. But it would be, um, considered permanent, semi-permanent. It's a, it's a, one of our volunteer activities on our list, hopefully, to send a volunteer around to, um, of course, check for, you know, any necessary maintenance, which we would perform, um, or any vandalism, to think that way, but it's a possibility. Uh, the idea would be to change them up quarterly, again, at our expense. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of the, we, we just really hope for a blessing, um, from, since it would be on town property. Any questions, concerns?
Anybody have any questions about the Story Walk Proposal?
Um, I, I don't really have a question as much as I was hoping for, um, maybe a request that, um, I, and it, and this was similar to what Yelena Hughes said, that, um, it is a part of the, the new walking bridge and kind of incorporating the gardens and maybe that side of Bone Park, um, more so than Laverne, just because it's such a crowded park over there and trying to maybe start to, to bring people to Bone Park. So in my mind, I was hoping that maybe that could be a part of the vision.
Sure. We are very open to whatever direction, whatever little spots of land, you know, the, the trustees are willing to kind of cede to us. I think that's a great, great idea. Uh, uh, Laverne was just in the proposal. It was our initial thoughts because of that pass-through there and kind of the fact that we're effectively contingent, uh, as the library to the park. We thought it would be that much easier to maintain, but completely understand and, and like that kind of side of Bone Park Botanic Gardens area that we lovely.
Anybody else have any questions?
No?
Yeah, I have one more question. Uh, will you have any bilingual, any, um, stories in Spanish?
We certainly hope to, absolutely.
Yeah, I would really encourage that. I think, I think Michael would be fantastic.
Administrator Sanderson.
Cara, thank you. I'm really excited about this. I think it's a great project. And Bone Park is wonderful because you could do some of the longer stories going out around the ball fields, all the way up to the jump park.
You want forever.
I just want to make sure that, um, when you guys choose your locations, make sure you work with me in regards to floodplain permits. I saw you're gonna have them elevated by 24 inches. I know they can't be too tall, otherwise kids can't see them. But, um, maybe I can help you with some of those placements regarding where the floodplain is less.
Happy to work with you on that. Perfect. Thank you.
So, um, are we looking for a nod from the board? Is it a vote? Is it a?
Whether or not you want them to move forward using their
A thumbs up?
A thumbs up. I think that's a unanimous thumbs up, Cara. This is really
We appreciate that, Mayor Rogan. Thank you very much. I will, uh, get to, uh, ordering, um, materials tomorrow.
Terrific.
Yeah, great.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, and moving on to general business, um, item 12 dot one is Spirit Hound Request for Extension on Purchase of Lake McIntosh Water Shares. Staff report. Oh, sorry. I'm still getting used to this. There you go.
Well, Mayor and trustees. So Spirit Hound Distillers had made the request to use Lake McIntosh Water Shares for their increase in their water usage, basically to increase their cap size a year or so ago. It did include in the packet some detailed information because the water shares, you get to be a little bit complicated. It definitely will take some time to understand all of it. But the basics are, in order to use water in Colorado, you have to have the rights to that raw water. The town gets their treated water from Longmont. So we have to provide Longmont with the right to use the raw water from somewhere. One of the standards had always been these Colorado Big Thompson or CBT shares. But they currently now cost about $70,000 a share. So a few years back, in working with Longmont and the town, it was decided we could, they could accept these Lake McIntosh Water Shares in place of the Colorado Big Thompson Share. Mainly because Longmont can actually use that water and treat it. It's raw water that they can get at a location that they can use and then treat it and give it back to the town. So that was something that was put together because they are much cheaper than the Colorado Big Thompson Water Share. They had previously been about 10 to $11,000. And so there are certain restrictions or certain limitations where you are allowed to use that. Affordable housing, economic development, or commercial development. And previous board did decide that Spirit Hounds was going to be providing economic development, and therefore they thought they would accept the Lake McIntosh Share. There was some confusion and Spirit Hound Distillers came back that they had not realized the process, what was involved in getting these water shares. And so after that was determined, what was needed about a month and a half ago, the 60 days will be the end of May, they came to the previous board to ask if the town could use, dedicate some of the water shares that the town had. The town currently has eight Lake McIntosh Water Shares that we have in a reserve to be used for projects the town, the previous boards had set aside from thoughts on what they would use them for. Spirit Hounds has been having a difficult time finding the shares. I have done some research recently, and it, it is something that's not out there. The sources I have found, some of them were not accurate that you can find on the website. There is a listing. None of that is actually correct. Um, in speaking to the Highland Ditch who runs the Lake McIntosh Shares, they gave me some information to try to help out those who might be looking for water share. And so I passed that on to them actually just earlier today because I just got that on Friday. So they've been continuing to work with staff to try to find out what is available. When they were coming, originally the request had been discussed for an extension so that they could continue to find the water shares. They are also willing or interested in purchasing the shares that we have. I would phrase that, instead of purchasing the shares, they would be paying cash in lieu of providing the shares. So instead of providing water shares, it's 1.4. You can't actually get partial shares, so they would be ending up providing two shares of the Lake McIntosh. They could provide They could provide cash if that was something the board decided they wanted to accept instead. My thoughts from the staff perspective are that. If we accepted the cash, we do still want to get the water right back. So last year, when Spirit Hounds had increased the amount of water they used. Basically, they were going up from the usage of water that comes with a three-quarter inch cap to the usage in a one-inch cap. And that required them to provide another double the shares that they have. And so at the end of the year, we still have to true up with Longmont what's needed. And so we told Longmont, they've increased their water usage, so we've dedicated 1.4 of our share that we have to Longmont already. So those are sort of out of our stock. We do hold them. It's technical, but we have dedicated them to Longmont. So we would want to restock the shares that we have. For that project, like affordable housing, or potentially of something bigger with the economic interest came along that the town thought there was a good reason to try to. Supply some type of economic benefit for, to them. You would have some water shares in your portfolio that you could provide as an economic benefit. And so we could do that. We could go out and look for them with the cash in lieu. My thoughts were that I would prefer to have the applicant trying to pursue those shares. Their responsibility, they know, gain the benefit of being able to submit to Lake McIntosh water share. If they were able to find them for cheaper than what we could, they could potentially save some money. There's also the risk that they could cost more, the cost could go up. That would be the more likely expectation if they're difficult to find. We wouldn't expect them to be going down less, but that would be an option. So my recommendation was to. Extend the deadline. I think I mentioned the previous board gave them a deadline of 60 days, which ends up being, I think, May 20th, to come up with their water rights. After the discussion on some of the confusion from the agreement. So the recommendation would be to extend it for another 60 days to try to have them go out and do more of the work to acquire those shares. We could, if we were to accept cash in lieu of the water rights, we would want to make sure we would. Try to cover an increase in costs. Potentially you could add something like 10% from what we previously paid when we purchased water rights. A year, two years ago, we paid 10,500 per share, is what I was told. And so another 10% of that would be another 1,050. Potentially you could ask them for 11,550. That's 10% more than what we paid to try to cover any possible increases in cost if we were to go out and. Look for water share. They are, the Spirit Hound Distillers representatives are on the meeting, as said they would be, and they're willing to answer any question or they may have more to provide also.
Thank you.
Brad is on.
Okay, Brad, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, hi, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
I thought that was a great explanation. Thank you. And I'm trying to get my camera on, but it's getting covered with something else. I think that the, the main point is, yeah, we have a timeline that we're working against and we're, we're trying. And as Eric pointed out, it's not easy. So we don't want to just string that along. I might agree, we, we will keep looking. That's where the cash idea comes in, just to be in good faith, I guess, while we look.
Okay.
And I guess I would throw out there, the third option is if the town has eight water rights and we're looking to purchase two. We would certainly like to buy those two, the town were willing to see this.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Director Kaplan? No, okay.
His three recommendations, his three, some alternatives are at the bottom of him.
Yep. So I, I have a question. So if we decide to accept cash in lieu. Obviously, we can't go out and buy one, nobody can buy 1.4 shares, right? We have to buy two shares. So it would be cash in lieu for two water shares plus potentially a 10% contingency fee. Is that what we're talking about?
That's correct.
Um, all right, thoughts?
Can I, can I have a, an estimate of what that represents in dollars?
23,000.
Thank you.
And change.
Trustee Donovan.
Um, and would there be a contract date? Would it expire at some point in case the town needs it for more housing or another purpose?
The contract for the water right? So that gets a little complicated. Basically, the shares are our shares, but every year we are re-dedicating them to Longmont for the amount of water we need to treat. So our water doesn't usually go down. It wasn't a perspective of something in there. We had to come up with it after the flood, actually, because we did complete some gap, but. That's another story. We'll learn about how that ended. So we won't have a way to reallocate those. Basically, we could get more shares to replenish what we've already dedicated. So, and sort of to point out, it gets a little complicated. Attorney Dittman could advise on selling water shares. You have to declare something surplus. So you wouldn't technically need to say or be selling shares. You would just be accepting cash in lieu of them dedicating the water rights that we need. So instead of them giving two shares of Lake McIntosh, they would give the cash. And then the town can decide, you wouldn't have to, but the town can decide if they want to use that cash to buy two water shares. You could potentially go out to the brokers right now and put a listing saying we would like to buy two water shares and when that became available. We would do that, or it could go towards the water fund itself, just to assist the water fund.
Yeah, if I could follow up on that for a little bit, I, I agree with Aaron that selling shares is not really a realistic option for the town. There's statutory provisions out there that don't allow us to speculate on water specifically. And so I, not saying this is necessarily speculation, but for that reason municipalities and other local jurisdictions have generally taken a position they cannot sell water. You know, they can dedicate it, you know, they could cash in lieu as a regulatory requirement, but as a general principle, municipalities don't sell water unless it truly is. You know, surplus and they'll never need in the future. And so my recommendation would be either, you know, the town maintains its requirement for the shares or accepts cash in lieu in that. Selling shares not be considered an option without a lot more study on the future needs of the town and then resolution declaring a surplus.
Thank you. Any other questions? Discussion, what do we think?
I'd like to just start off with, I hate to say this, just real quick, can we have a water share training at some point?
Yeah.
There's a lot more I'd like to know.
Yeah.
Before making any decisions. So I'd kind of like to see what we could do about having a training to get more information.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, that was actually in the training plan a lot. Yeah. Anybody else have any thoughts?
We do need to make a decision on this one tonight because their extension is running out and they would have to provide a CBT. And if we don't extend or take cash in.
Mayor Proton.
I would move to extend. My feeling is then that would give us a chance to get perhaps. A crash course on water so that we can make better informed decisions. So that's my motion.
My second.
I don't think, we're, Attorney General, we're not actually voting on anything.
I thought we were giving direction.
Just giving direction. We're not taking a vote. We're not taking any formal action.
Oh, still a resolution.
And so if there's direction, I'm so sorry to interrupt. If there's direction, it'll be formalized in a resolution ratifying that decision in the, the next meeting. So.
Great, thank you. Okay, and, and I would, I would add to that. I think it's, I think an extension is a, is a fine idea, particularly because the shares are hard to come by. But I would say that if, if we extend another 60 days and they're unable to be located, then we accept the cash in lieu. And that way Spirit Hound doesn't have to keep coming to us and asking for more extensions and we can just have the matter settled and, and move on.
I question though, is that cash in lieu based on today's number of what a share is or versus 60 days out what that number is?
That's why they're basing it on the most recent sales plus 10%.
Plus 10, okay, I understand now, thanks.
How do we feel about that? Any other discussion or argument or? Okay.
So I like the idea of the extension. The only thing, could we have it be the, instead of being the price one it is now plus 10% of the price of what the shares are in 60 days? In case they go up or down in a drastic way?
I don't know that we'll know what they are. It's not really an open visible market. We're already going by just what was previously paid. Current entity I was talking to that deals with them is looking for a large batch of shares and they're having trouble finding those to fulfill that order, they told me. And they don't know when you need to get that off the table before they're going to move on. So it is tricky to know exactly what the cost would be. Not out there, you know, they can't see it.
Okay, because my only concern is that we're saying it's $11,000 now, but say in 60 days it goes up to $20,000 and we'll be looking to replace the shares. It might be a, a bigger burden on us. That's all.
Guessment on it, is it a highly volatile market?
I mean, I remember reading before I moved out here from New York that in the West, all rights are about water rights.
Yes.
Is it highly volatile or is it relatively stable?
Lake McIntosh is much smaller, so these Colorado Big Thompson shares are what communities across the front range use to trade in water. Lake McIntosh being a little lake right out here is really only probably Longmont. Longmont, I haven't had a specific count. I've reached out to them a couple of times, hoping to hear back some more. Had over 50% of the shares of the Lake McIntosh Water Company. It seems to be, have become more speculative or more volatile, specifically because the town of Lyons is now accepting those shares. And it's gone in conversations of other entities, and it's just reasonable we talk about that, will need shares. The Moss Rock Hotel is looking at shares, Planet Bluegrass, Spirit Hound additional shares. So that may be leading into the more, if people are paying attention to that, they're aware there may now be a market concern.
So to clarify, I'm sorry, do you speak? Okay, so to clarify, it's 17,500 currently. No.
10,500.
Is what we paid a year or so.
Oh, I don't remember seeing that number. 10,500 plus 10%, so $105.
That's for one share, so two shares.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? No? So, so how do we feel then about the extension of 60 days and then cash in lieu with an extra 10% added on? No, Mayor Proton?
Um. Yes, okay.
I, I would prefer just to do the extension and then revisit it in 60 days. I know they don't want to come back, but we're a new board and I really don't understand this. So I'll say that in front of everybody. I'd prefer just to do the extension.
I agree. If we're going to have more requests for water shares, cutting down a little pipeline, I think we need training around this so we can understand this better.
I agree, an extension only.
Okay, well. So. Yep, that's, so we'll do the 60-day extension and, you know, fingers crossed that you can find the shares. In the meantime, we'll do a board training on water shares and, you know, not that we don't like seeing you, Brad, but hopefully we don't have to see you again on, on this matter. And appreciate everybody's knowledge and experience and helpfulness.
So could we extend that?
I appreciate the conversation. I guess what I would leave with, and thank you for the consideration of the extension, I guess, what I leave over that decision thought would be, if the town does have a stockpile of eight of these rights. They are for economic development. That's exactly what we're doing with it. So it's not that they're going to something other than what they're intended for. We're just trying to make ourselves, keep up and grow.
Understood, thank you.
Could we extend it to the June 6th meeting, slightly beyond 60 days, instead of having to have a special meeting in between?
Absolutely.
May, May 20th was the deadline, so if we were extending it 60 days from that.
That's why I just extended it from now, okay.
I would be going to 60 days from May 20th if that was the case.
Yeah.
And then maybe we could help, and I guess I could connect outside of your meeting, but it would be helpful to understand the perspective on if you have these rights and they, and they can't be sold by you, how do you ever get rid of them?
You don't, we take cash in.
The town, for the town's internal uses primarily.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
So I believe looking at the calendar that the second meeting in July would be the 18th. And so it might be worthwhile saying July 18th.
Okay. Until July 18th and then we'll get, we'll get more than a crash course on water rights.
And so this, for the board is aware, so your next meeting, there'll be a resolution essentially ratifying this direction, saying that, you know, Spirit Hounds will get an extension until July 18th.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, wildfire mitigation update and discussion, I think that is Planner Strong.
Hello?
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. So I'm providing an update on the town's ongoing effort with wildfire mitigation. And so I'm going to start with some background with the wildfire task force that was started in 2020. And that was created with the prior board and they accomplished a number of, I guess, efforts towards wildfire mitigation. They, they created the task force. They identified town-owned properties that were at high risk for the task force. A fire mitigation or fuels reduction event was held. They assisted in developing a 2022 budget for file fire mitigation at the Martin Parcel, which is also 109 County Route 69, 4012. And then it's, they had some wildland, urban interface or WUWE code recommendations. And so that task force consisted a lot, like really is volunteer effort and kind of began to dissolve in early 2022. So the prior board had directed the PCDC to explore adopting a WUWE code. And PCDC met with this task force and looked at their wildfire mitigations and we really quickly realized that it's wildfire mitigation is, is a pretty broad approach. And adopting a WUWE code really needs to be a coordinated effort. That's, you know, and it, it's only one piece of wildfire mitigation. And so the PCDC discussed a strategy with the prior board and they agreed that they should be tasked with. Developing another wildfire mitigation task force, really to have this broader effort. And so. The board asked the staff to come back with a resolution recommending a task force. So. I guess since that workshop, PCDC's formed a wildfire mitigation. I guess since that workshop, uh, PCDC's formed a wildfire mitigation subcommittee, and along with, um, town staff, myself, and Administrator Simonson, we met with the, um, Fire District, Lyons Fire Protection District, uh, a few weeks ago, and I think it was a really productive meeting. Um, and so it was important, we, we learned a lot about what the, uh, Fire District's goals were moving forward, which is important, and we need to incorporate those in the town plans moving forward, and the meeting discussion was pretty broad, but a few things that we took away from that was, uh, first, the Fire District started an outreach strategy to connect, and they're doing that through neighborhoods or HOAs, and so they've, uh, they're meeting with community organizations that they've already met with, uh, Long's Peak, uh, HOA, so that was good to understand what they were doing. Uh, second, the Colorado Fire Commission's formed a wooi subcommittee that's responsible for adopting a minimum statewide code, and the Fire District has recommended that the town actually wait and leverage that statewide code when we adopt our, uh, code and also develop what requirements will best fit for Lyons. And then last, the Fire District provided a copy of the twenty-eleven, um, Lyons Fire Protection District Community Wild, wildfire protection plan, the CWPP, and this plan was adopted over ten years ago, so it, it's not new to the town, but it was interesting to hear that the Fire District's perspective was it, is it's a really useful document, and a lot of the recommendations were actually implemented. So those were, I think, three takeaways from that meeting. Um. Moving forward, the town and the, um, PCDC Subcommittee, we plan to just, um, continue to work towards bringing a recommendation to the board for the wildfire, uh, task force. Um, we're going to meet again, we're just not prepared yet. Uh, we're meeting again with the Fire District in June, just to continue to understand what their goals are, who the stakeholders that really should be involved in this task force should be, um, and just continue to gather information on it. Uh, the town is going to join the, um, Fire District, uh, working with neighborhoods and just trying to educate the community. Um, the town's working on events that are already planned. There's a curbside limb pickup, uh, May sixteenth and seventeenth, and Lyons Prepared is organizing a limb drop-off, uh, for unincorporated residents, and then there's gonna be some other volunteer opportunities that come up as well. And, uh, also moving forward, the town spoke with the Fire District on helping them with providing grant support. The town has a lot of experience in applying for grants. They have limited experience with that, so we're gonna have staff help support them in these, uh, grant applications. And the PCDC is just going to continue to look at the wooi code. There might be other opportunities other than, um, say, there's guidelines or other opportunities in town code just to try to integrate wildfire mitigation whenever we can, um, rather than adopting a whole wooi code right away, and then also just keeping an eye on where that, the, um, CFC is moving with the statewide and just making sure we're ready for when that gets implemented. If there's any waivers we, we need to request, or maybe we want to strengthen, um, parts of it, uh, so. I guess, um, right now, we plan to follow up with another update to the board in June after we meet with the, um, Fire District again. And with that, I'm just happy to answer any questions. Really meant tonight to be just some background, so, and the update to the board.
Great, thank you very much. Questions? Trustee Domon.
So for, say, the Martin Parcel, do you know how much mitigation would change the look of that parcel? Referring to, I think it was Heidi's questions earlier.
Yes. So we have put in a request into Emily Gubler, who is the, um, person on the Lyons Fire Protection District who will be doing the wildfire assessments, and she will be visiting both the Martin Parcel and, um, the area owned by the town, but across from the ADA fishing access and long park. Trying to stay away from that word. And, um, she will be, her and her team will be doing an assessment of both parcels and giving us levels of mitigation. So we don't know that answer yet. We're hoping to get out there with her, you know, in the next week or two, and then they will come back and tell us, you know, if you want to clear this totally, you know, this is what we suggested would take. I think we'll get levels. So then we can bring that back to the board, and you guys can decide if you want it to be pristine, or you want to keep it as natural as possible, but reduce fire, uh, combustibles by a certain percentage or however, but we don't have the answer yet. Hopefully soon.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, you go first.
Uh, yeah, so I'm aware that the, uh, the Fire Department is working with different neighborhoods. They met with Long's Peak, and it sounded like it was really good. Might have heard it was really well attended. Uh, Saturday is Steamboat Valley Roads, uh, meeting, uh, with the Fire Department, and I know the discussion is somewhat around what potential wooi code there could be, which will be, as we all know, regulations and responsibilities by property owners. Uh, I understand we have just hired a new code enforcement officer. Um, I'm just wondering, is there any, any way he could get involved in this sooner than later to understand what, um, code might be important, uh, coming up and, and to start meeting, it might be a good time for the code enforcement officer to start meeting with the neighbors, uh, with neighborhoods and getting to know people through these meetings, because I think there's just gonna have to be a lot of just work with the Fire Department and the town and the people just to understand, you know, some of the price we're all gonna have to pay as far as cleaning up our properties. Just a comment.
So in our discussions with the Fire Department, we had said we wanted to try to meet with all the HOA, um, chairs or presidents together and kind of start laying that groundwork of, we're going to ask you guys to take more responsibility of your own neighborhoods, and then, um, from there, meet with the HOAs, um, individually to answer questions and come up with mitigation measures. Um, so I'm surprised to hear they're meeting with Steamboat, because we'd asked them not to meet with the different groups without us, so.
Oh, it's my wife did that. I'll, I'll tell her when I get.
Well, I'm sure they're not.
Yeah, she just called the, uh, the Fire District, and they just scheduled a meeting.
So what we had agreed to was the town will really, we want to work with the Fire District, but that we wanted to focus on getting all of Lyons Town proper, um, met, to meet with the different neighborhoods and come up with mitigation plans for twenty twenty-two, so that the Fire District can focus on unincorporated, because those are really more of a potential hazard to the town than our own neighborhoods, probably. So that was how we left the meeting, is that we were gonna meet with, um, strategize on coming up with a schedule for each of the different neighborhoods together so that we, code and compliance can work with their group, um, and we want them to focus on Apple Valley and Lyons Valley Estates and, um, the neighborhoods around us that we really don't have, um, code enforcement.
So on the Steamboat one, should I just have her email you?
Oh, you sure could.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that's, it's fine. We need to work together on it. I, people are interested to get going, and, and we are too, so. Um, it was really giving you an update today. I think they want to get through their election tomorrow. Um, they're probably focused on that, and then we're gonna really hit this hard.
Just, just to add to that, I think that really speaks to, we haven't been a great, I mean, our relationship, I think, with Fire is great now, but in the past, as far as coordinated effort, we haven't really had that, and just having that meeting, um, a couple of weeks ago was big, and having another one in June, and then maybe more establishing more of a strategy together is really useful. So when we came to the meeting with, you know, big plans to establish a task force and like an agenda, we realized we, there's just like a lot of organic conversation that was just really productive and getting us on the same page, and we're, I think we're getting there, and and I think, uh, you know, having another meeting already set up is great and continuing to build on that, because we didn't even know about, um, Long's Peak, and it was like, oh, okay, so now we want to be included in this, and so those are big steps, I think, even though just because it was really lacking before, so.
Mayor Forcham, did you have a question?
Yes, I have three things. So one is the date, um, for the limb pickup. I may have caused some confusion here.
It is the sixteenth.
It is, okay, super. So, because I did put that up on Facebook.
And, and I had it wrong in my report versus what the newsletter said, so I just confirmed with Dave Hasbro, and he said it's the sixteenth.
Great, okay, super. So if, yeah, that's really good to hear.
Yeah.
Um, so I wanted to verify that, and then in terms of HOAs, I know that on our Facebook HOA in Stone Canyon, I've, it sounds like the Fire Department has, somebody's reached out to Stone Canyon and is trying to coordinate this. Um, so it might be a good idea to follow up with them probably tomorrow or the next day, because I think it's in the works. Um, so, yeah, there's, and I had volunteered my house, so we'll see. And then communications, there was something later in there, um, sorry, I thought I had it bookmarked and written down, but I don't, but it was in the, um, the packet that's got all of their neighborhoods and, um, risk evaluations and management, and towards the end, under the appendant, appendixes, it, it listed the neighborhoods and their danger, dangers. But there was also something that I thought was pretty darn cool, and if there was a way to add it, maybe like in the paper, so on packet page two two six, annual fire safety check checklist, I know I saw you posted up on Tik, uh, um.
Over to check.
On, uh.
Oh, yeah, that was great.
Yeah, Twitter, and, uh, but I was wondering if there's a way that we could perhaps post this, if it's either something that we could have on our website, something that we could send out in an e-blast, maybe it could go in the newspaper, but to really, from a town perspective, can we sort of get that communication out?
They, um, the Fire District asked to take the lead on that and that we not do that.
Oh.
So this is that overlap between, they really should be the lead on all things, um, fire. We actually went and put it in, it's in your packet tonight as well. We put together an evacuation checklist for them, of thing, how to get your family ready.
Yeah.
And they said, please do not send that. We all need to be using Boulder County OEM's checklist, not our own.
So is there a way to get that sent to every house and?
Yes, I think again, we were waiting for tonight and for them to get through their election, and then we will start all of these things.
Fantastic.
So, um, yeah, it's just timing. They're, they're just, they were trying, during all of this, they were fighting, we had three wildfires in five days. Um, and so, um, I think that's the intent of everyone, and good intent, because, yeah, same as with this, we thought we were doing a good thing, and they were like, you still.
Interesting.
Okay, okay, we'll step back and let you guys take the lead, but what we can do, and Kim is back also on Wednesday, um, we will make this a higher priority on our website, and we'll link everything to the Boulder County OEM.
Okay.
And those tasks are some things, okay.
That makes sense. Did you have another question?
That was it, those were my three things. Who, who else has questions?
Oh, Attorney Gipman, sorry.
Yeah, I, there is some legislation that's currently before the Journal of Somebody right now that has an effect on this. I don't know, Phil, did you want to talk about that? I think the Porsche probably know. What was going on there?
You want him to?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, and I'm not the expert on this by any means, but I did have a conversation with CML about this, um, last week, and there is a le- legislation currently pending, I believe in the Senate at this point, that would basically require, um, all car municipalities to adopt some form of the wooi code, and we don't know what this is gonna look like yet. Basically, the, the wooi code that required to be adopted would be set by a state, um, commission, and so that could be e- either much stricter or much, uh, more bare bones, and, you know, we might intend to pass. And so it's a very, very much an unknown as to what it would actually look like. Um, CML and the CCA, the Colorado County Association, is opposing this for that reason, that, you know, every jurisdiction is different. Some aspects of a, you know, maximally, um, you know, invasive wooi code may not be feasible for smaller jurisdictions and, um, and, and so that's something to keep on your radar, is that there is state action, it's from my understanding of CML is likely going to pass in some form on this. I just want to keep that on your radar too, as we discuss this issue.
Thank you. Um, so I, I have a couple of questions. So I, I remember hearing, um, about eighteen million dollars out of Nubusa's office, I think, coming to help with wildfire mitigation. Has the task force heard anything about that or what those funds might be able to be used for?
No.
No.
The eighteen million dollars will be, um, channeled or funneled through different regions again. So we will be working with ours through Boulder County Sheriff and the Fire Districts within that.
Okay.
So it's, um, it hasn't come up yet to attend anything to try to allocate those funds, but again, I anticipate that'll be very soon.
Okay, great. Um, and then I, at one point, there was, um, talk, and I think it was with the chief, about doing evacuation practices in town neighborhood by neighborhood. Do we have an update?
That will, that's what will happen with each of those HOAs.
Okay.
So each of the HOAs cover really the areas most, um, vulnerable, because they're all on the outskirts adjacent to open space. Um, and then the town, like, um, central part of town, both north and south of the river, will be a group.
Okay.
As well.
Okay, is there timing for that or?
That's to be determined when we finally get to meet with them.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then finally, so the, the plan that was included in the packet um, is fantastic and so extensive, and do we know if there was ever an implementation plan for that plan?
Yeah, I, I don't believe there was. I mean, from what I understand, when it was adopted, the town wasn't in, really in coordination with Lyons Fire at that point, and it kind of really fell off. We don't have a lot of copies around Town Hall and, um, but trying to just, yeah, get this, spread the word on it, it seems like it's so valid, but that's.
The CWPP is like their comprehensive plan, and so then they have to implement it as they can. Um, that apparently was adopted ten years ago and never given to the town until this year.
Wow.
So this is the first time I've seen it since Chief Pick was situated, and now he's giving them out generously. So, um, they are, they find that most of it is applicable, just like our, I mean, there's much applicability. It probably needs a few updates, but they are going to use that as their guiding back to.
Okay. Great to know. That's it. Um, so, any other questions? Well, thank you so much. Um, this is great work and so necessary, so really pleased to see it moving forward with the Fire District.
And knowing this is your number one priority, we will be keeping this on our radar regularly for probably monthly updates in an admin recorder, a planning update, um, and then as a general business side of this.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to trustee reports. This week, we'll be starting with trustee Williams and moving in this direction. Trustee Williams. Trustee Allison.
Hi, so yes, uh, after we were sworn in, the next day, met with, I don't know, I'm on two boards, I think it was the college, ecology advisor. And that went very well, great people, we introduced each other, got to know everyone, so it seems like it's gonna be going very well. So next meeting, I believe, is next week. The second board of all, this is one of Sustainable Futures.
Yep.
So we actually met, uh, with them at Oscar Blues, they had a really good, um, meeting with them also. It was really open and talking. So we had a lot, it was a really good discussion. Trustee Dayton was there and I can't see that trustee. There, I'll think. Yeah, that was, it was a really good meeting, good work with them too, and then it'd be really nice to see all the, the commissions meeting, that's like that one.
Yeah. Thank you. Mayor Forcham.
Um, so yes, we, we, the, um, the PCDC, I'm not, I'm having a hard time just shifting to being their liaison now. Um, they, uh, had a nice meeting with Clarion, the consultant on, and it was all about the comprehensive plan. Um, some feedback that they got from the open house, um, that was last month, was a more desire for utilities and hazard mitigation. So that was some of just the verbal and. So that was some of just the verbal and input that they got, um, so that's, you know. I thought that was really useful, um. So we are basically now like, um. So what's your last name?
I'm Strom.
Um, Claire Strom. I know, and everybody's first names, so sorry, okay, I have to become more formal. Um, so, um. So it is, it's going to be much more about land use and maps, uh, we will be meeting in June with the stakeholders. Um, that's all of the commissions, um, Boulder County, CMX and CDOT. So Clarion will be hosting some meetings with them to, to dive deeper into. Um, what they're looking for, there will be an open house in June. Um, I don't have that date off the top of my head, do you? Happen to have it? Is it the sixteenth? Okay, so, um, what it's going to be is the sixteenth, okay? And so there'll be some hybrid meetings because that people aren't really embracing that, um, and then we will do some one-on-one meetings with some of the commissions. And then there will be the open house with everybody, so multiple opportunities to get more input, um. And I do want to update the, the, one of the goals of the comprehensive plan is to retire the LPPA. Because we want our primary planning, um, element. In the comprehensive plan, so the action recovery plan and the LPPA will, they don't go away, but you know, it's going to be fully updated and completed in the full document of the comprehensive plan. Um. They still want to work on identifying and defining density. Um, and then identifying districts, maps, annexation, so those are some of the big things that are happening. Um, and then I believe Clarion will be coming to the PCDC and the Board of Trustees as a joint meeting sometime perhaps in July. So you know that frequency enough settings. Yeah. Trustee Eddie.
Uh, yes, so I'm sitting on the utility and engineering board, uh, the last meeting April twentieth was canceled because they didn't have a forum, that's correct. The next one is, uh, May fourth at four thirty, so that's the first one I'll go to, right?
No. Oh, yeah, sorry.
This one.
Yeah, yeah, it's this Wednesday at, at four thirty, um. So, so I don't have anything there, the other one I'm on is the student advisory committee, I have no idea who to reach out to actually. Okay, so yeah, if I could get that, and I suppose they don't meet during the summer.
They don't have to.
Okay, well, all right, so I get summer off.
Trustee Dati.
Actually, if I can add to that, I know the CMX planning committee was wondering who would be taking over from the two, um, student leaders now who serve on that council. So they were wondering also who to reach out to. I hear volunteering over there, somebody has been volunteered. Um, so just like trustee Ellison, I also had, uh, a couple of meetings the following day after being sworn in, a couple of days afterwards. I was excited to sit down with the Economic Vitality Commission. Um, and review some of their goals for twenty twenty-two, and I was really happy to see how they. Um, neatly dovetailed into the comp plan, everybody, I mean, from the commissions. I've been to so far the Housing and Human Services and the Sustainable Futures, and then the Economic Vitality Commission, it seems like people are really taking this. Comp plan very seriously and trying to have it fit in with the goals they had already. Um, discussed at the end of last year or coming into this year, so when I look at, um. Principal two, building a thriving year-round economy, I see, you know, goal ED one, uh, creating an environment which local businesses can prosper year-round. ED two, reinforcing the role of downtown lines as the destination of residents and visitors. And ED four, uh, continuing to enhance the appearance, functionality and safety of Lions gateways and public spaces. All fit into their set goals for this year, when I asked them, um, how they felt about, um, each of the goals, there are four of them in principle two, um, around economic development. The, um, most votes went to goal number three, which was prioritizing the attraction retention of businesses and services that allow Lions residents. To meet more of their daily needs close to home, this is why I feel like consulting with the commissions as we go to their meetings to find out what their. Priorities are helps us to determine our priorities, so that was really helpful feedback for me to, for our workshop earlier. It also brought up a lot of questions for me, um, to better understand the role of the Main Streets program, and then I. Read, met recently with Brianna Hoyt, who's the Main Street manager, so I could understand. Um, her role and how she worked with the chamber and how she worked with EBC, because we have, she is on that commission as is, um, the Chamber of Commerce. Um, and, uh, and so it was just interesting for me to try and understand, uh, how all these programs relate. And better understand the websites as well, such as the Lions Colorado website, which I didn't realize you could submit an event to, and that there was a calendar there. And I would strongly recommend moving forward if we can somehow link, um, that calendar to the town calendar somehow at tab. So that people who are looking to see what's happening in Lions can actually.
I think she did have.
Easily, easily find that information, um. I also was wondering if there was any funding in the twenty twenty-two budget for the special events coordinator position, or if that had been posted, or if that had been.
Kim has absorbed that.
Okay, all right. So just talking about everybody's role, it was really, it's really a great, um, and I also learned there was a subcommittee for parking, so, um. It seems to be a very, uh, vibrant commission and lots to learn. I was, I've been following the Housing and Human Services Commission for a while now, just, um, trying to get. Get a breast of the situation, there is a lot of excitement and a lot of, um, discussion around the Summit Housing project. That will be complete, um, within a year with the four, fourplexes and the twenty-four single family units. And I was very grateful that Administrator Simonson was there because there were a lot of questions around the criteria. Um, for applying, uh, for those homes and also identifying. People who will be able to apply, and I feel like the priority for this commission will be to make sure that. As many residents of Lions who live or work here or were impacted by the flood are ready on day one of the application process with their. Um, application complete, so I think the commission is already talking about a timeline, working backwards from the completion date. As to when we will have pre-screening sessions, well, first, how will we identify those people, how will we reach out to them? We want to make sure that all forty of those units are, um, taken by people who live or work in Lions or were affected by the flood. And so that was really exciting and, and to follow up with trustee Ellison, um, with the grand opening of the Academy Place Apartments in Broomfield. Um, just last week and to see what Summit Housing is, um, capable of and, and meeting with the owner and meeting with the, um, some of the partners the town has been working with. Was also, um, just really enlightening, um, just to see the quality. Of their work and, and the pride they take in their work, and. I was really heartened to hear from some Afghani refugees who had been resettled there, out of fifty units, eighteen of them, some Afghani refugees. I think it'd be really, um, interesting, I think it'd be very beneficial, um, for this new Board of Trustees to meet with Summit Housing. Paul Caps and Austin and Craig, and I think it would be, um, worthwhile so that we can understand. The deadlines and the criteria, and so that the Housing and Human Services Commission can really line itself properly, it'd be hugely helpful. So that would be my request on behalf of the Housing and Human Services Commission.
Thank you, trustee Donovan, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to follow up real quickly, while you were gone, I believe, we updated our website. And now Visit Lions is right there on the front, takes you right to the tourism site. Okay, so it's them.
Yes, and, and great job, we all did a great job. Trustee Donovan.
So I am on Parks Rec, uh, committee or liaison, and I will be attending their meeting a week from tonight.
And, um, the, yes.
I didn't realize you were, uh, hi, our meeting, next meeting is May eleventh, I need to know who to reach out to on that group.
For historic preservation, yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you.
That is the time for the next meeting, last meeting was April thirteenth.
Okay. It's a fun group, I'm sorry to give them up, but I'm glad that you have them, yeah. Um, the LAHC hasn't met yet, um, but I'm looking forward to that. And I attended, uh, the Dr. Cog meeting online, um, Dr. Cog is moving to in-person this month. So, um, that's, that'll be interesting, um, field trip to Denver. And, uh, trustee Edding has graciously agreed to be my Dr. Cog alternate, so guess you're going to Denver now. Um, and we, I also, the subregional, the Dr. Cog Subregional Forum met, I think it was last week. Um, which was terrific to see everybody in person and kind of get my Dr. Cog feet under me again and get Lions back at that very important table. So, um, and that's all I have to report. And so we will move into staff reports, flood recovery manager Sanders.
Thank you, evening everybody again. Um, so I'll just give you a quick overview of, um, the two recovery projects that we have left, and then a couple of CIP projects that we're helping manage. So the fourth, uh, Fourth Avenue pedestrian bridge was, you all may know, we're replacing the bridge that was washed out during the flood. And to save Ruffs School Grant, so that includes improvements to the sidewalks and adding bike lanes and a trail. And so the contractor is focused on, um, wrapping up as much of the sidewalk as they can, um, coming up to the point of the bridge approaches, because they can't do that portion until the bridge is placed. And, um, I believe next weekend we start some of the striping. We do have a little bit of a delay with the bridge, I do want to address, there's a rumor that the bridge was too short, but it's not true. But we are making some adjustments just because it's a field, some conflicts that we found in the field. And, um, just to schedule and subcontractors and stuff for some of the work that needs to be done, there were a bit of a delay on that. Portion of the project, but everything else is moving along very well with that project. We also, anytime you make, um, any changes to the stream bank or the stream. Um, you may be changing your flood plan. And so we're working to determine if we need to do, uh, what they call a letter of map revision. With the county and through FEMA so that they could reset our flood plan mapping, so our floodway, a hundred year, five hundred year, all the mapping. And we, um, so we're trying to schedule a meeting with Colorado Water Conservation Board, so the CDC. To determine, because we did a no rise on all our projects, basically stating that anything we did, we weren't adding. But we did find out that we also reduced the water in the stream, and you can, you may need a LOMAR for that too. So, um, I'm working with the town engineer on that, working on scheduling, seeing every CD, and then if we need to do that, um. Submit that to the MFP, we're going to do an approval, we'll need funding for that. First we get a, determine if we need to do it, and then next steps will be scope and then funding. And that would take care of, um. All of our recovery projects, I did add in here, we're down to, we did receive nine and a half, nine point five million dollars from the state. To allow us to cash flow all these projects we've been doing, so we're working towards paying them back. And we paid them back three point one million to date, we still owe six point four. But on the other end of it, we're still owed five point three million of reimbursements and closeouts from FEMA and the state, so when they start. Closing out FEMA projects, then we'll take that money and turn around and repay the state back. Um, as money starts flowing back through, and there will be about a million that we're responsible for. And that will be covered through that set aside, even doing set aside for potential clawback and negligible costs, so we should be okay there budget-wise, we have. Taking set aside about one point four million to date, so we're doing pretty good there. And then just quickly moving on to the two CIP projects, um, one capital improvement project. Um, is, we have the US thirty-six Broadway. Um, project where, that we're adding in parking along Broadway going from Fifth Avenue to Third. And then we're putting in a ten-foot wide multi-modal trail from Fifth Avenue and connecting it to the four-door trail. So right now that's in design, we do have to meet with, um, CDOT, this is CDOT under the project, and we do. And so we do have to meet with them in June to do a design review, so we need to be at a minimum of thirty percent design, maybe up to sixty percent by then. To meet with them, and then they'll give us comments back, and we'll make adjustments, and then we'll do another dynamic design review before, um. We move on to a hundred percent and go out to bid. So the schedule on this is hopefully this fall, we'll be ready for this up to bid and get it started this winter. Um, but we are a little bit behind schedule right now at the firm, but we'll see if we can make it up. And then finally, or sorry, there's two more, trail extension we did discuss tonight, so we're awarding that contract reports. And they can, um, get started with environmental, and then we'll move on to roadway with them, and then we'll go into design. So I don't have a schedule on that quite yet. And then finally, um, we're, we received GOCO funds to do improvements at the Black Bear Hole area. And that parking area over on Second Avenue, so they've been really focused on the Black Bear Hole area, they've been probably seeing the fencing. And we've been making improvements to the stream bank, because it was eroding away really bad there, and then we're going to add in some landscaping and some parking lots. Um, we're replacing that decking on that ped bridge, and then we'll move over to the, the trail. What we're calling a trailhead or that parking area, and we'll add in a restroom and some parking blocks there and landscaping and mitigation over there. So normally I won't go in so much detail, but these are some of the new projects, you guys, I just wanted you to know what we've been working on and kind of the scope of each of those projects, so.
And is that Black Bear Hole supposed to be done by about Memorial Day or so?
We're really working towards that, I, the overall project will be done at the end of June, but we have, you know, we. Trying to really push the contractor that we know that people are going to start showing up there at Memorial, at least in that area. But we're going to have some new landscaping there that we're going to have to try and do people offer, so it's going to be a little bit challenging. And, and that's another thing, I just want to state that, you know, to the community, like, please stay out of these construction areas. When people take down fencing and cones and they're climbing on equipment, and it's just dangerous, and it's also a liability to the contractors, so just want to remind people that it's a safety issue.
Maybe we can add that in an e-blast.
I think we have, we have, and I just, I just keep trying to put it out there. I know it's hard for the, just even.
Oh, sure.
So it's a little challenging, so.
Any other questions? I have a couple, um, so the, the LOMAR. When will we know whether we need one and how much money are we talking about for that?
So, um, we really need a schedule call, call with CDOT, and we can get some direction from them. So I've been trying to work with, get this scheduled with the town engineer, so actually I did a note to myself, I have a call in the morning to ask him. Like if we can get this scheduled in the next couple of weeks, um, but, um, I did have an estimate, it could be a hundred thousand, a billion hundred thousand dollars. It could be quite a bit of money, because you have to go out and do surveying, then you got to do flood modeling, and then you have to pay a fee to FEMA to review that information. So just depending on how many projects. Cause we've, from basically Laverne Johnson Park down to behind the Lions Village homes, we've made improvements. So each, we have to look at each one of those and determine which ones might have made a change in the flood plane, and then that'll determine how much money we'll need to, for this LOMAR.
Okay, so, so this has the potential to impact the opening of the pedestrian bridge?
No.
No, it doesn't.
Not, we did a no rise with that as well.
Okay.
That's how we've been able to keep moving forward, all these projects we've shown a no rise. So we may not have to do a LOMAR at all, um, but like I said, we've kind of found out, maybe we can make a change of three inches lowering. But like I said, we've kind of found out, maybe even make a change of three inches lowering the water. That potentially can trigger a LOMAR. But we need clarification.
Okay. Is this the same potential LOMAR that we've been talking about for the past two years?
Yes.
Okay.
So it'll be nice.
It's the looming LOMAR.
Yeah, I'm just wrapping up this last project to, you know, we still had a couple, like Second Avenue to wrap up last year. And we did some streambank work downstream. So yeah, now we're like getting to a point like, okay, our project is about, we need to work to do this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thanks. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Administrator.
Two items, I'd just like to clarify a little further, the LOMAR. We know that each of our individual town projects didn't create a rise or 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 a shift below. What we don't have is all the projects that were done in between. All the individual properties, all the other improvements that might have been done that we didn't know about. Because if we look at just the Second Avenue Bridge itself, it didn't create a rise. But our hope is that with all the work we've done along the way with projects together, that we've actually created for that floodplain to come, become narrower, so those homes come out of the floodplain. So this will gather all the information of everything done along. It's actually three miles, I think, it's a mile and a half of river to get the most accurate picture in hopes that we're reducing our floodplain. And then second of all, I'm going to mention this, Erin, unless you tell me not to, about what happened at Summit recently.
No, that's fine.
I know we think, we like to think that our community is above doing vandalism and graffiti. But when we talk about projects getting delayed because people are crossing construction sites, Summit and its subcontractors had significant damage to all of their equipment.
Oh.
And we do not know, you know, it's not an area that has a lot of ring cameras on it back there, but probably will now. Enough damage to delay the project and cost, you know, thousands of dollars to that contractor who's just doing their job. We don't know if it was, you know, a group of teenagers or if it was someone trying to slow down the project. But I am so disappointed when I hear that stuff because I just think we are, should be, should be more respectful of our neighbors and our community than that. So if people have a beef, they need to be coming and talking to you guys, not, not stupidly enough to do vandalism to very expensive people.
I I take it a police report was filed?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. But it did slow the project down and they're very disappointed, you know, how discouraging for them. So and it wasn't even Summit, you know, it's the contractor who's, they've got all the equipment.
Well, would you express our regret to them?
I, we did, but it is, you know, the three of us have to, they call us in the morning and say, all of our equipment's been tampered with.
What, so are they talking about putting security cameras up in there at all?
I would, I would think that they're going to try to keep that confidential, but the sheriff is working on things.
Okay. Is there anything?
It's a big area.
It's huge. Is there anything that we as a board, do you think, can do to show our support?
I think it's just more, again, sending those messages every time we have, you know, people, they think like this graffiti that's really quite childish, it's not a big deal. But the last bill again was over seventeen hundred dollars to get it removed. That then puts it in a different class of crime. So I think it's more of of us as parents and adults. Where are your kids? What are they doing? What are they doing to keep themselves entertained? And of course, on this situation, I don't, I, I, the sheriff doesn't share things until they get further in their investigation. But I sure hope we don't find out that that was sabotaged by adults.
Yeah. Trustee Datty.
I have a suggestion for supporting them, and this is only based on a remark from Paul Capps last week, who, who suggested there is some delay. He was hoping that the DOT could help him go past this delay. I don't know, he mentioned Aaron's name and something about paving a road or a fire access.
They, they want to feel to start building house foundations before the public infrastructure is done. And that's usually not allowed. Usually you do all the public. So if that contractor doesn't follow, developer doesn't follow through, you don't have these skeletons of houses standing there with no access to them.
When the firefighting capabilities, the fire department doesn't want to sign off on a building permit that you start building unless they know they can get in there and fight the fire. So a fire hydrant within six hundred feet and a road to get in. So again, we are working with them. I don't know if that was before or after the new one, last meeting I had that we were working to say you could start with six hundred feet on both ends from, because there's a fire hydrant on both entrances. Of course, the one entrance still needs a lot more explosive work and is a lot farther behind, the west or south entrance compared to the north one, which you feel a lot of the grading. So they could potentially start there. But again, to try to start building before they put in the, in particular, the water line to the fire hydrant. Then they don't want to put the road over there until they put the sewer line also in. Some of the other utilities are on the side and not a big deal, but trying to get the road built. So that was some discussion back and forth with them. So that they can get a handful of building permits to get started on those. Get the road into that point, someone else can come in and start doing the building. They can continue with the road going forward to get to the next hydrant. And then next group can move behind them to start doing the building there. And we do also have an option of a, a foundation only permit, but that gets to be, normally that's a thousand dollars. It's not something you usually want to go into, but it is not something we talked about, but trying to reduce their costs. It made more sense to try to work something else, start on some of the buildings, if not all of them.
And again, you know, they're welcome to come in front of you guys anytime, give you updates, make requests.
I think they're, I think they're very interested in you.
Well, they can make an agenda request.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else, Administrator Simonson?
Yeah, I have a couple of things on my report, I'll try to keep it short. The main newsletter is out and in utility bills. Do you want to let people know about the tree limb pickup? It is Monday and Tuesday, June sixteenth and seventeenth. There are very specific guidelines. This is for, I'm sorry, May, May sixteenth and seventeenth, thank you. There are specific guidelines, this is limbs only. This is not all green waste. It needs to be stacked, but not in the street, not on the sidewalk. It needs to be in that sweet spot in between, if you have one. So make sure you look at our website or the newsletter to get the details. And also want to let people know that I, we've said this before, we want the public to know that Concerts in Sandstone Park will be on Wednesdays. They start on June eighth. And this was in a response to the business community saying that that's really their slowest night and it would be very helpful to them to have people coming downtown for a meal and a concert. So we are going to give that a shot this year. And then June fourth is a semi-new event. We did it last year, but we're up to make it annual now, the Artisan Market at Bone Park. And in conjunction with that, it sounds like there's going to be a barbecue hook up. So that should bring you. And what?
Live music.
Oh, and live music. So that's something to look forward June fourth. Anyway, there's a calendar of events in your newsletter that we want to let people know about. Bears have been spotted locally now, so it's really important that those people who do not have a place to store their trash, do not bring it out till the morning of pickup, please. And resident parking passes for vehicles in our parks are available online. TownofLyons.com parking pass. And irrigation systems throughout the parks are being turned on this week. The Lyons Ditch has been turned on as well. We do have a request from them, I just want to make sure this gets on the record. They do this every year, they lease eight CBT shares from us, it's just leased to use once their season stops, which is getting earlier and earlier every season. And last year it was like June, oh, mid-June. So there's the hottest time is still to come. So we allow them to use some of our units of CBT through the ditch system, through Laverne Park and then through town. And they leased it, they know that if we need it, we will make a call for it. But so far, and with this year's snow package, it doesn't appear well. We do need to be prepared, though, that Bone Park, we are probably going to be using potable water instead of river water because highway seven construction continues to make that water along the South Saint Rain really full of muck and clay and dirt, and that will just destroy our, our pumps and systems. So until we know they're done with their river work, we probably won't start it unless we have some kind of guarantee they're not going to be messing with the stream bank. Other than that, personnel has taken a major turn. We have hired a new co-compliance officer, his name is Zach Burgess. We've also hired the office, admin office manager and permit tech out at Public Works Parks and Utilities. So we are very excited about that. And we have accepted, we have two new maintenance one workers, which is always a difficult position to fill, but more to go there. Both are local. And then we have three seasonals. So that took a big turn after we made some changes to that personnel. Other than that, I think, I, that's all I have unless you have questions.
Any questions? Great, legal update. Attorney Dettman.
Thank you, Mayor Rogan. So I already mentioned my first topic of discussion, which was the legislative action on the WU code on a statewide basis. And there's a similar effort also, actually just recently signed with the governor in respect that would basically enshrine model codes for local jurisdictions concerned energy efficiency and other energy upgrades to residential buildings in Colorado. I think for, for Lyons, you know, probably not a huge deal, as we've already done a lot of the things required by this. But some of that CML is also opposing for the same reasons I stated. The WU code is being opposed to as well as that for smaller jurisdictions, you know, it's can be really difficult. And will definitely have impacts on the ability, on the affordability of housing in some situations. And we'll, we'll have a full legislative update when the session ends, which will be fairly soon. I just want to also keep your, you know, keep some things on your radar. And that may have an effect and may have effect on what we're doing this coming term. Also, I just want to remind you all that we're going to have an executive session on Honeywell, the next Board of Trustees meeting on the sixteenth. Try and be there if you can. I think it's be really important for all of you to get an update on the history of that and, you know, what the current litigation and arbitration proceedings are. So that's all I have for right now. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for attorney Dettman? I forgot, I forgot to mention earlier that I did deliver a bouquet of flowers and a card to Laverne Johnson on Saturday morning. Yeah, she, I'm sure she's grateful. And her room was full of flowers. It was full of cards and it was full of love, so. Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, summary of action items.
Get the updated goal setting list back to the Board of Trustees for review. The story walk presented by the libraries to move forward. We are to extend the Spirit Hounds deadline into the July eighteen forty trustees meeting. Schedule a water share training for the board. And follow up with fire on the steamboat neighborhood fire game.
Administrator Simonson? Attorney Dettman.
Oh, and then we need a resolution to enshrine that Spirit Hounds action, so.
Great.
Oh, I have one more thing.
Yes.
Street sweeping will start tomorrow.
Okay.
And they'll start on the north side of town tomorrow and then hopefully the south side of town on Wednesday. Unless it's raining, which would be okay for me, then they'll probably pick it up.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, well, it is, gosh, it's five to nine. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second? All right.
All for the vote.
And the motion, the motion passes unanimously.
Terrific, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.